Good evening. I'll call this March 28th, 2023 Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. I'll start off by saying, I don't think it should matter considering the people present, but I suspect with our public hearing continuation for Spot On Fairfield LLC and our public hearing for one and two, that we will... The applicant has submitted a rebuttal in writing, and that is his or its prerogative. So considering public comment is over, we've accepted all the documents we need for the record. So in case anybody is here in person or listening online, they get to Spot On. I will be closing the hearing at that time for the reasons I said. So moving on to meeting minutes from March 14th, 2023. May I have a motion? Commissioner Harrison?
Motion to approve minutes. It was intended to me.
Second by Commissioner Levy.
Just a note, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe...
Oh, thank you, yes.
Commissioner Francis is joining us online, so Mr. Tom would be sitting for...
Commissioner Porcello, all set? Commissioner Harrison said okay on her end. Commissioner Levy?
Fine to me.
Any other comments from the commission? Put it to a vote then. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, passes unanimously. Next item is 1173 North Benson Road, request of Fairfield University for 100% release of a $160,400 bond pertaining to special exception improvements in the double A zone.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this, I don't have much, this, a couple new townhouse buildings were built on the North Benson side of campus. These bonded improvements were for the drainage associated with that. They're completed, and you have in the email packet that I sent with the agenda, an email from our town engineering staff concurring and recommending 100% release.
May I have a motion? Commissioner Ford, move to approve.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Levy, second. Commissioner Ford?
Based on comments by staff, I ask them to approve the motion.
Agreed. Same. Any further comments? Seems straightforward enough. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, passes unanimously. Next item is 1173 North Benson Road, request of Fairfield University for 100% release of a $147,540 bond pertaining to special exception improvements in the double, excuse me, yeah, double A zone.
Similarly, Mr. Chairman, this was the construction of the new, what was labeled as the Convocation Center, now known as the Maloney Arena, the new basketball arena and event space for Fairfield University. All the bonded improvements are completed, and you have a similar report from the town engineering staff recommending 100% release.
Commissioner Ford?
Move to approve.
Second, Commissioner Berman, does your hand go?
Oh, no.
No, but...
But I will second.
Yeah, sorry, I saw it, caught my eye. Commissioner Ford?
Same as before, based on the comments of staff, I recommend that we should approve it.
Commissioner Berman?
Likewise, and based on the report from engineering, that the bond should be released.
Again, straightforward enough. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, passing unanimously.
I just note that Commissioner Francis emailed me, she needed the link to attend the meeting, so she should be joining.
Oh, thank you.
I did send her that.
Next item is under new application to recommend a public hearing, 186-212 Hillside Road, special permit application of Marsh Real Estate LLC pertaining to a second floor addition to an existing dwelling, dwelling in the Design Commercial District. Mr. Went?
Okay. You might recall, I'm sure you do, that last year, the Greenfield Hill Animal Hospital was approved for a new location, which is presently under construction on Hillside Road. This address is their existing location. There is a small cottage on that site in addition to the veterinary office, and they're looking to put a second floor addition on, and since it's in the commercial district, it does require special permit.
May I have a motion? Commissioner Levy?
Move to refer to public hearing.
Second, Commissioner Harrison. Commissioner Levy? Required, yeah. Commissioner Harrison, required. Put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, passes unanimously. 1280... Sorry.
Commissioner Francis, can you join us?
Okay. Commissioner Francis, can you hear me? Commissioner Francis, can you hear us? Yeah, if you don't, I'm gonna, considering it's recommended public hearing, I don't think she'll mind. If she does, I'll take the brunt of it. 1280 Stratfield Road, special exception application of Andale Third LLC, DVA, the Goddard School for an interior expansion into an existing second floor currently used for storage in the Neighborhood Design District. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is the site of the Goddard School on the corner of Stratfield Road and Fairfield Woods Road. There is a second floor on this building presently that they are not using for classroom space. They're looking to create two new classrooms and expand their enrollment, which does require special exception, which requires public hearing.
Have a motion. Commissioner Levy, first. Commissioner Ford, second. To the public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing, it's required.
Commissioner Ford?
Public hearing, same.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Braun?
No question.
Oh, no question, I'm sorry, just anticipating the next. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Passes unanimously, seeing seven hands. Commissioner Francis, can you hear me? Just when I went in, zoning compliance, next one, but she can't hear us.
Mm, I suppose so.
Why don't we dive into it, and I'll see if I can text her?
Ms. Hargan, can you still hear Commissioner Francis?
No.
No?
Okay, now I can hear.
Oh, there we go.
Such a beautiful...
Okay.
Thank you, Lenny.
Commissioner Francis, we're going to zoning compliance. So I'll call 1968 Black Rock Turnpike, zoning compliance application of Fairway Plaza Associates LLC for facade improvements in the Design Commercial District. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is, this building is CVS building on Black Rock Turnpike that also had for a number of years Boston Market adjacent to M&amp;T Bank across the street from ShopRite. The Boston Market tenant has left. They're looking to upgrade the facade to remove the aluminum roof and replace that with an asphalt roof, and then put a brick veneer along the fascia, similar to what they've done across the street on the ShopRite Plaza, and put a new facade pediment above the, what was, the current vacant tenancy to kind of show that there's two tenants. Because right now, there's kind of a triangular, I don't know, I've got it on the screen, I'm sorry. The lower image is the current, the upper image is the proposed, and they're adding that pediment on the right, which will be above the vacant tenant space to kind of emphasize that there's two tenants within that building. No change in the footprint or square footage of the building, it's just trying to spruce up the facade to facilitate the rental of that vacant space. That's all I have. Any, any questions, Mr. Chairman? That's the CVS property, right? That is correct. Okay.
Commissioner Berman, is there a motion on?
Yeah, move to approve.
Move to approve. Second, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Berman?
Obviously, it's properties familiar to many. It's, what they propose to do is in compliance with the zoning regulations, and hopefully it will attract a new tenant to replace the Boston Market.
I see it, Commissioner Braun, let's go to Commissioner Ford.
Just quickly, I like the, trying to match with their across the street, so it brings a little bit of uniformity on Black Rock Turnpike, it's a nice touch, so I have to approve it.
Commissioner Braun?
I have a question about the tree regulation we have. When do we impose that? Not order something like this, I assume, with just a compliance application?
Typically, if a site's being redeveloped, or if there's an addition to an existing building, that's typically when that would be invoked. There's no change in the footprint here, so there are street trees along this...
I know, they do have trees, but...
But it's tightened up in the parking lot.
There's no requirement that if a tree comes down for some reason, they have to replace a tree on any of the, any of the parking lots in our town, I guess?
Well, if it's an approved landscaping plan that has street tree or shade trees within it and want it removed, yes, there should be replacement treatment.
Thank you.
But I don't think that's the case here.
No, I agree, yeah. Anyway, it seems like an improvement in the facade, so I...
Commissioner Francis, you're good to vote on this? Okay, I see, I see a yes. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Francis is back in. So could we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, so it passes unanimously. Next item is the pre-application review, 160-219 Ash Creek Boulevard. Commission will conduct a non-binding pre-application review, discuss for a potential development proposal. As they come up, we'll just, as the commission knows, for the public as well, this is non-binding review of a potential idea, a potential proposal for this site. The idea is to get, to gauge the commission's interest. We should certainly be asking questions, giving feedback, essentially that's the point of this whole process.
Just because there's not a lot of people in the room?
Normally...
If you get, they're having trouble hearing you just...
I think ideally, it's limited to 30 minutes, but depending on the discussion, the questions, we certainly don't need to stop at half hour. But again, I would encourage questions and feedback, and that's the point of the process. Frank, and it will only help going forward, should they move forward.
I can't hear you, sorry, I'm online.
Share the screen now?
Yes, please.
So...
Ready for us?
All set, thank you.
Thank you for having us. Good evening, my name's Lisa Feinberg. I, do you need me to mic up?
This should be fine where it is.
Thanks, Jim. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. My name's Lisa Feinberg, I'm an attorney with Carmody, Torrent, Sandec, and Hennessy. We have offices in Stanford. With me tonight, to my right, is my partner, Jay Klein, and we have a team of folks over here to my left to answer any and all questions that you guys have at this point, so I'll just run through them for now. Ray Sullivan from the Sullivan Architectural Group, if you guys can just kind of raise your hand. Earl Govan from Plades and Govan Landscape Architects, Brian Carey from Land Tech, Stuart Johnson from Minno and Wasco Architects and Planners, and we are all here on behalf of our client, May Fairfield CT LLC, which is an entity controlled by Accurate Builders and Developers, represented here tonight by Jack Lutman, who is the President and CEO, and David Kahn, who is the Executive Director of Acquisition. So as the chairman noted, we are here on a pre-application. We were encouraged by your staff to come in this format so that we could have a discussion about the proposal without all of the pressure associated with a formal site plan application. We are excited to be here, we've been working on it for a long time. I know you all know that the site has been on your radar for a very long time, and we're excited to see it moving forward. So today, you can see up on the screen, the site consists of two different parcels, which are bifurcated by Ash Creek Boulevard, consists of about 23.9 acres. The development is bordered generally to the north by the Metro North Train Tracks. The Metro Train Station is to the east, to the south is Ash Creek, and then generally to the west is Canard Street. So if it's okay with you all, I would like to take a step back before we move forward with the proposal and give you a bit of history, because there is significant history on this site. So next slide online, please. So the current property was originally part of a much larger, not 35-acre parcel, which was owned by Black Rock Realty LLC. At the, Black Rock purchased the property around 2000 with the intention of constructing a large flex industrial type of development, office space, all commercial. At the same time, the town and the state were looking to retrofit your train station to make it ADA accessible, and they also needed significant parking. They were looking to build a parking garage with 1,500 parking spaces. My understanding was that the town was not really excited about putting a gigantic parking garage in the middle of your lovely downtown, and started looking for other options, and that's when they started engaging with Black Rock. Can we go to the next one online, please? So Black Rock, the town, and the state of Connecticut ultimately entered into an agreement that would allow for the public infrastructure improvements that the town and the state were looking for on this 35-acre site. It would also allow for the commercial development to happen on the western side. So this is the site plan that was approved back in 2003. The parties entered into this agreement, they began the entitlement process around 2003, and that ultimately led to the construction of Ash Creek Boulevard, which you all know, the metro, the Fairfield Metro Train Station. And then it was approved for the 930,000 square feet of commercial, office, hotel, and retail space, extensive parking as well, including the 1,500 commuter parking spaces. So unfortunately, that project was swept up into litigation, which led to delays till about 2006, and then further delays caused by the Great Recession. So it's sort of ironic, we don't normally see the public infrastructure getting completed before the private development, but that is exactly what happened here. I'm going to go to the next slide, please. This is, this was the rendering, I forgot we had that one, of the project that was approved in 2003. So one more, please. And that's the aerial, as you would see it today, so you can see Ash Creek completed, all of the very large surface parking lot, and of course, the train station. One more, please. Okay. So private development wasn't completed. Fast forward to 2018, and Black Rock decides, you know, the market has really changed, we need to go back and rethink things and get some residential development right. So they approached the town about some revisions to that site plan, and that's what you see up here on the screen. The new proposal included five residential buildings, so those are along the perimeter of the site and the one in the center, as well as a hotel with 118 rooms and a restaurant that's on the northern edge of the site, just west of Ash Creek Boulevard. And it also included conceptual approvals for a concourse building, which was envisioned as kind of a commercial component, which also included a train depot that was part of the deal with the state. It was really important to the state to have this space for folks waiting for the train station. And then further south, kind of at the bottom of the screen, was the building known as the Point Building, which was a retail space, and that was also approved on a conceptual basis, not a final site plan basis. All of these changes required in the wetland approval, revisions to your transportation, commercial park overlay district regulation, special permit approval, and coastal site plan approval. And those approvals were all obtained in 2019 and 2020, and remain vested and effective today. So some of you folks may have been there for that part. Accurate purchased the property in 2022. Next one, please, Emily. And for those of you who may be unfamiliar, Accurate is a developer of mixed-use, large-scale residential and commercial projects. They are headquartered in New Jersey, but they have assets throughout the Northeast. And since purchasing the property, Accurate has, you know, done what nobody before has been able to do when they began construction. So building four, which is the one that's furthest south, closest to Ash Creek Boulevard, is currently under construction, that's 70 units. And they also have spent a lot of time and energy reevaluating the development program, and believe that it needs to be right-sized. And so that's what our team has been tasked with doing. I think with that, I will turn things over to Jay, and he can walk you through the proposal. You okay there?
Yeah. Am I okay with the, am I okay with the mic?
Yeah.
Yep?
Perfect.
Hey, everyone. Jay Klein, I'm Lisa's partner, and here on behalf of the project.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, you're having trouble hearing me?
Could you put it a little closer in front of you then?
There we go. How about that?
Thank you.
Perfect. Before getting into the site plan that you see in front of you right now, I think a little bit more history that helps sort of inform where we are, and I think where the town is too. You know, Fairfield, I think, has really done a great job in planning for housing in a way that other communities really haven't. I mean, Fairfield's first housing plan came out, I think, in the mid or late 80s. I think a lot of towns maybe are just adopting their first housing plan ever in the past 12 or 18 months, or something like that. You all had a 2014 housing plan that followed, that I think was actually titled Taking Control of Our Future, that recognized the importance of being proactive when it comes to developing, you know, your town rather than being reactive. And then, of course, your 2022 plan, which I thought was a pretty smart idea, had a survey of town residents, and of those surveyed, I think it was 60% who said, hey, if we're going to have some more housing, we'd, you know, near transit, near trains is really the place where it ought to be. So that history really informed what we have before you here this evening, and I think if we get it right, you know, this can be the next chapter in that terrific story. Different from the original plan, from the housing plan, all of our density, our homes still on the west side of Ash Creek Boulevard, but spread out across seven buildings. And you'll hear about the different architectural enhancements and styles that Ray Sullivan incorporated into that in a moment, and you'll hear about the terrific site design from Earl Govan as well. One of the key things that we did, as Lisa mentioned, was really right-size the multifamily component and take advantage of the asset that is Metro Center. The original plan, I think, only had 40% of the permitted density under the existing zoning regulations. It was really underdeveloped by that metric. That not only has an impact on tax rolls and depressing commercial development, but when you don't develop the assets that can support housing, you increase pressure on other neighborhoods that maybe can't support it, the same way that Ash Creek Boulevard can. I think the other piece that we're excited to share with you tonight as well is over on the east side of Ash Creek Boulevard related to the concourse building. Stuart will walk you through, you know, his inspiration for that building, which really is a hybrid of that old hotel and office building, a hybrid of those two uses come together to help right-size the mix of uses on the property and have a really attractive and achievable commercial component to this community. So I think with that overview, we'll turn it over to our other experts, and we can talk about tech, you know, there's some regulation amendments, not as exciting as cool buildings, but happy to go through those after as well.
Oh, Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you, and, you know, I really appreciate you recognizing the great effort Fairfield has done with housing, you know, it is important to all of us, and usually we don't get complimented, but I do appreciate that. I did have a question. I guess how many uses would be affordable?
So this is a concept right now, and we're targeting, assuming this concept was built, it would be 80 affordable apartments, consistent with the transportation.
Sure, sure.
Yep.
What percent is that?
12%.
Okay. And I guess, you know, things have changed since COVID, people are working at home, people are not using the train. Has that influenced the design? Because I'm wondering, I love TOD, I think it's a beautiful visionary concept, but has that changed anything with what you're thinking here?
You know, what, I'll say my piece, and I think other folks might have something to say about that. This is not the first, I know this is a draft plan, but this is not our first draft. This is something that we have thought about and, you know, started, I think Lisa, you started maybe before COVID, but we've been working all throughout on this. We think that, you know, this will be appropriate even in a post-COVID world, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Braun?
Just because we did approve this, I don't know, a couple of years ago, can you identify the differences very specifically, the number of buildings, number of bedrooms, number of parking spaces, height of the buildings between the old and the new plan?
Sure.
Also, it looks, they're being moved in a totally different configuration. Maybe go back, of course, we could look at the old one compared to this one?
Yeah, and I can give a high level, and, Emily, if you want to scroll back to, and then maybe turning it over to Ray and Earl, who can provide even further detail, but the original residential project was 374 apartments. We'd be proposing 674, oh, 357, I'm sorry, 357. We'd be going to 674.
How many would?
Yeah, and there were five, one, two, three, five residential buildings on the west side of Ash Creek, and then an additional hotel building. We would have seven residential buildings.
No hotels?
Yes, and there is a...
You don't have to write, we actually submitted a chart that is the before and the after, so you don't have to write it down.
Yeah, yeah, and we can email...
We have that, right? It's in the record, it's in the link. Yeah, okay, that's why, I thought I saw it, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's in memory, yeah.
Yeah, and then I think the other piece, you know, and this is something in your 2019 TOD study, you know, back in 2019, you know, the market seemed like it wanted 70% residential and 30% non-residential. Fast forward a few years, that number feels like it's better around 80% residential and 20% non-residential, so that's a difference in terms of the blend of uses.
And what are the heights of the buildings now versus the older heights?
I believe that on the west side, it's relatively consistent, I want to say.
By west side, you mean towards Canard Street?
Yes, on the west side of Canard Street.
Actually, towards the wetlands between you and Canard Street.
Yes, yes, yeah, and then the concourse building, oh, yeah, Ray can speak to that, and the concourse building is going from a five-story office building to an eight-story hybrid office, hotel, restaurant building, which Stuart can walk you all through.
And the residential, you said, was going from what to what?
357 to 674.
Let me bring him up if you like.
Oh, that, oh, four stories to five stories, sorry.
Is someone going to talk about, who is responsible for the conservation easement and the stewardship easement of the wetlands that are right? It's a little bit concerning that you could be building up so tall right next to the conservation area that's adjacent to the west side. That could be addressed later, it's just a question I have, that's all.
Yeah, I'm sure if we bring up anybody, yeah.
Yeah.
So Earl, you want to pick over?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Francis, go ahead and...
Could you go over the seven buildings and tell us the number of apartments in each and the building, well, the building height, the number of stories and the number of apartments in each of the seven of the residential units?
I think they're going through that now, and the chart has been provided in the link that will help as well, but if you can, please, like, the big thing, I think, is what was, we approved something December 2019, what are the main differences? To the extent, be as specific as you can, especially right now on the west, far to the west side, the west of the Ash Creek Boulevard, we will, are you looking for, the concourse is still conceptually approved only, I think, right?
Right.
Yes, so the eight-story building would be on that concourse, which is only a conceptual design at this point, but maybe that's eight stories, that's something to talk about. I'm sure we're going to have a lot of questions on that, but at least let's, on the Ash Creek side, specific differences between... side, specific differences between then and now.
So for the record, my name's Earl Govan, I'm a landscape architect with Blades and Govan, Blades and Govan here in Fairfield. So just to go back to the original design, Emily, maybe you want to go back to the, and this was a surface-parked, 350-some-odd-unit apartment building with parking underneath the L-shaped building in the middle only. So as you can see, that plan has a significant amount of surface parking, and the buildings one, two, three, and four along the Ash Creek Conservation Area are all built on grade. Those are all four-story buildings, including the L-shaped building and a hotel. I think Ray can probably talk a little bit more about that. That was, it was basically a project that was built on grade and a standard construction, basically, you know, with a standard site design.
And on grade, you mean on grade to the impervious, the surface main parking lot, not on grade with Ash Creek?
That's correct. I mean, at the lower end, yes, but it sunk down, went down, rolled itself back, but it's on grade, meaning it's built on surface, not on a concrete deck or not on parking. So if we go to the new plan, there is a 180-degree shift. So the entire project, well, not the entire project, 70% of the project is now concrete deck with parking below. So we have a, basically a three-tiered project, two series, two and a half tiers you don't see because they're underground. There's a parking level at the lower level, there's, what you see is two levels. The level along the left, one, two buildings, one, two, three, and four along the Ash Creek are at elevation 25. Buildings five, six, and seven, which are the ones in the middle, are at elevation 35 or 40, plus or minus. So they're up at 40, the other buildings are at 25, and there's parking below the 25 level at elevation 50 that you don't see.
Could you, could you just repeat that? I didn't catch all that.
So buildings five, six, and seven are located at elevation roughly 40.
Where are those?
Those are the ones in the middle, the three large buildings in the middle, and they come off of Ash Creek. So Ash Creek slopes from elevation 45 to elevation 25 along our frontage. The north side, we're coming in at elevation 40 or so, that's where we, that's what grade is, so we're trying to align those buildings up at that upper level. The lower entrance, which is the south entrance, comes in at the mid-level and accesses the buildings, all the buildings up above, but also buildings one, two, three, and four in, along the waterfront. So again, it's two tiers with the level of parking below that you don't see. You slope down between buildings five and six, so you enter in up at 45, you, buildings five and six, there's a, that red circle is an entrance point that's still on grade and roughly slopes down, down to the next level, and that roadway in front of one, two, buildings one, two, three, and four along the conservation area are all accessed by the, that roadway that you see there. That predicate on the fact that we need emergency vehicle access to every building in the front, or at least every, every building. The buildings six and seven not only are accessible by this road, but the deck is high enough where we can get emergency vehicles underneath, yes.
Yeah, sir. Earl, can you, the four, there are four residential buildings around the outer perimeter.
Yes.
Can you, what elevation are those compared to the previous approval?
Generally the same elevation.
In the same building height?
They are five stories high.
Does anybody have a pointer, just out of curiosity, a red pointer? If you do, I think that might be helpful. North, south, all that, pointers are always a little easier.
So buildings one, two, three, and four, which we're going to call the perimeter buildings, one is on top, two down, and then three takes the corner, and then four is being built now. So let me step back. Building four is a four-story building that's being built now, currently under construction as approved. Buildings one, two, and three are redesigned as five-story buildings at a generally the same starting point as they were before, with now with the level of parking below them. If you've been to the site, there's a big hole in the ground. We're trying to fill it.
Is it below grade?
Below, well, if you, have you been, if you've been to the site, there is a big hole right here that goes down to elevation nine. Would you rather I do that here? Oh, I can, can I not?
You can't.
Oh, I can't. There's a big hole in the ground right now that's elevation nine. So what we're trying to do is fill that up with some parking. We can't go down all the way to nine, but we can get down to 15, so we fill up the hole to 15, we put a level of parking, and then we build these buildings up at elevation 25. And this roadway at elevation 25.
Point to the building that's being constructed now.
Elevation 25.
Right.
Oh, that's this building right here.
Okay. So like-
Yeah.
So right now, the entire 23 acres is covered by a plastic membrane, right? To keep the insulation below, so you're digging below that, obviously.
That's not true. The membrane, you can follow the line, basically follows this general kind of location.
I thought it went all the way to the-
There's a berm that's built currently, and it's under the, it's under the first berm, but not throughout the entire area. Where there's the big hole in the ground, there is none. There is no, there is no cap at the moment.
There never was?
There, no. No, there's a liner, I'm sorry, a liner, not a cap.
So with buildings five, six, and seven, there was no cap in that part?
There is currently no cap under five, six, and seven.
There wasn't a cap for that?
I mean, there's no, currently no liner. Liner it is, not a cap. The liner extent runs-
The cap is the liner, right?
Underneath the liner is the cap? I'm not quite sure. The hazardous material was, cap and liner was limited to the perimeter along the conservation zone. Because if I'm not mistaken, much of the conservation zone has a liner and a cap. So it was pred, it was part of that original process. The hole in the ground, the excavation, which is currently, was a removal of all the hazardous material and then filled with gravel, is located here. That was, had removals, but it was never, they never put the liner in when they were waiting to get to this next level to do those, so they didn't have to take out the liner to put one in. Does that make sense? So to go on, we have buildings one, two, three, and four are at elevation 25. Buildings five, six, and seven are up at Ash Creek elevation 40, plus or minus. Those are accessible by pedestrians off Ash Creek into the main entrance on the north or into a garden space, which we have between five and six, which is meant for passive recreation. It's a multipurpose green space meant for, to be a green roof, to be, to maintain stormwater, to provide seating pods, gathering pods, exterior dining, exterior entertaining, et cetera. So it's a multipurpose area that's accessible by the residents, not, it's not open to the public. The public space is out on Ash Creek, which is adjacent to our commercial space or our leasing offices and such, which are located here. So that's public space along Ash Creek, facing our buildings five, six, and seven. There's a fence here, and then there's private space back here, which would be for the residence of the community. There's a small amenity building here, which would also house the same kind of activities, dining, entertaining, game rooms, et cetera. And this is, it's really, it's kind of a stormwater garden. It collects stormwater, it uses stormwater, and then slowly emits it out off the site following the rain. So we try to use as much of that water as possible in this green roof system. If we can slide over just a little bit to the left and down, we've kind of have some, some of the same items. So a couple of things I want to talk about here. We have our pool area, which is still in that same location, taking advantage of the view down the river to the southeast, and that will have community space in either one of these two buildings, which will be accessory to that pool building. One of the major issues here is we're reactivating the two detention basins, which are located on the west side of the property, which were bypassed by the previous application. So if we could zoom out just a little bit, there's two detention bases that were built as part of the original design back in 2004. They're there. They're, they're slightly undersized for this project because of all the changes in stormwater management since 2004 to now. The numbers that you have to store is higher than it was back then. So we're planning on storing the excess, what the existing stormwater basins can't handle, we're going to store on our site before it goes into there. So we're going to reactivate the basins that were designed in 2004. The infrastructure that, trying to reactivate infrastructure that was, was built but not utilized during the previously approved application.
Where does the stormwater go from those basins?
They're, I believe they're infiltration basins, so they go into the ground. So this was all part of that, when they renovated, this is all built. So this was built for this reason. The overflow, it goes, then it flows slowly down. I believe it flows down the slope and into the man-made wetland, which is further to the left.
See, I thought, yeah, I agree with you. I thought the man-made wetland was supposed to be sort of towards, like, higher, towards the top, I guess that would be north.
It's toward the west. It's between the Mohegan concrete, that's built.
Man-made freshwater wetland that was supposed to flow into a brackish water wetland, which was supposed to flow into a tidal wetland, which is part of Ash Creek. So is that where it's all being directed to the top, so it can all flow down like that?
I'm not quite sure exactly, but I do believe it goes into, yes, it goes into the freshwater pond before it goes out, down into. And again, that's, that was all engineered, part of the, that's part of the existing infrastructure that's there at the site now.
Does this go to DEP?
It did back, it did back then, yes, I do believe.
As well as conservation, I assume?
Yes. I mean, I believe there's seven acres, nine acres of conservation area-
Nine acres.
-that was built, cleaned and built by this, by the previous owner of this property in anticipation of building the office building that was approved in 2004.
Thank you.
One of the other items of the infrastructure that we're trying to activate that we hadn't meant previously is the tunnel. That's existing between the concourse side of the site, the train station side of the site, and our site. So now with our new design, with the elevation 25, which we were discussing, you drive underneath buildings five, six, and seven to park, and then you can access the tunnel, which is underneath Ash Creek, which goes under the concourse building, concourse building. So it's now all interconnected as it was originally. We've, in fact, this, I think this proposal probably more mimics the 2004 approval than does the 2018 or 19 approval in terms of its density, its size, its quality of its construction. If you notice then, they had, they had green roofs, they had all these items that we're talking about now utilizing again. We're trying to institute those into this design.
Commissioner Braun.
Not to pepper you with too many questions.
No problem.
We had a recent concept review of another one at 81 Black Rock, which you might be familiar with, and also there is a path that's supposed to go through that open space area. And when this came up two years ago for this development, there was a big question about public access, because this whole thing is only for the people that live there or their guests. So number seven on your map is for public access to that open space area.
Yes.
And it starts the path that goes along Ash Creek, up towards Canard Street, through the Wayland, and I guess ending up where Whole Foods is or something like that.
Yeah.
But number one, can we have more parking for that so more public people can use the path? And number two, is there a capability of that being connected to whatever's being developed at 81 potentially in the future? And finally, I can't, I forgot my last question.
If you remember, let me-
It'll come to you.
So the path is connected to the sidewalk system, and it goes actually behind the point. There's, the path continues behind the point, which is back here.
What point?
That's, this is the point. It's called the point, it's that little piece of development that's separated from the main development by this inlet here. It's not on this plan, I don't think, but it's, it is a small retail building that's separate from the main body of the project. There's a conservation walk that goes behind that. So it's there now, and we connect to that. That's meant to connect to the bridge from Black Rock, Sanford Street or?
The current, the current-
Fox Street.
This current road bridge, right?
No. There's a future pedestrian bridge that's supposed to connect with the walk that we have on our site, that I assume can connect up with 81 Black Rock.
Where's that bridge supposed to connect to?
That connection on this land, you'll have to look over here, is, is over here. Right, right around here somewhere off Fox Street, comes across, comes across here and then connects up with the walk that does this, and also connects up with the pathway over to the train station.
Thank you.
Let me see if there's anything else. So just to maybe summarize, buildings one, two, and three are at the same elevation they were originally, they're five stories instead of four. There's parking underneath those.
Underneath, okay, that's why I wanted.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? There's one, two, and three?
One, two, and three. There's, I'm sorry, under one and two, there's parking, three, there's not.
Okay. How many levels, one or two?
There's one level of parking underneath one and two.
Is the parking at grade or is it?
It's underneath the building, and that's at relatively the same elevation the original proposal was. Buildings five, six, and seven are up one story, they have two levels of parking underneath them.
So one that would be above-grade of surface and below-grade of surface?
Surface, meaning it's accessed by the level of where one, two, and three are. So it's accessed at elevation 25, that's the lower level, be underneath five, six, and seven, and then there's a lower level below that.
Of parking.
Of parking only, right. That meant, that level at one, two, and three access the tunnel, which accesses the parking underneath the concourse.
And what's the height difference for five, six, and seven?
The five, six, and seven are all five-story buildings.
Okay, and they were previously, well-
They were all four, except for the hotel, I think, might have been, might have been a little smaller.
That's where we'll go next, but we got, I think-
The tunnel. Where's the tunnel again? Sorry.
The tunnel is between five and, six and seven underneath Ash Creek.
Is it number 20 right here?
Yeah, if you, number 20.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right, right in here.
I don't know, excuse me, Earl, or you or Ray, it might be helpful if you've got, I don't know, hopefully it's not here. Just a, quickly QSP one, two, and three, just to kind of see those different, is that on there?
I don't think that's in there.
I don't think it's in the draw. Any-
But he has some.
It's in, it's in the link material.
For, for 2019 property, I'll wait for everybody.
Just in terms of how the parking is layered in the, how the floor plans work, it might be beneficial-
I think Ray has some things that probably will help describe that in his section.
Just quickly, though, was there mixed use in 2019? Was there a commercial component? Is there currently a commercial component?
Yes.
Okay. So buildings one, two, three, and four will have first-floor commercial?
No, five, six, and seven, actually.
Okay. Did one, two, three, and four have commercials?
No, we never thought that that was a good idea.
No, no, that's fine, it's just, that's just a memory thing, that's fine. So five, six, and seven will have just first-floor commercial or will, just first-floor?
We have some commercial space at the end of six and seven as well as the concourse, so that's where our commercial is.
Okay, concourse aside for now, because, but-
Six and seven.
Just first-floor, we expect realta, retail, restaurants? If you're going to do that, I don't, yeah, that's fine.
Just another thing I wanted to point out, and I think Ray did a nice job, was we stepped back, the buildings, and Ray's going to go through this, we stepped them back from four, five, to six, oh, sorry, three, four, five, you know, six-story buildings, three, four, and five-story buildings, so it steps back as a, off Ash Creek, so.
Before we go, Commissioner Harrison.
Go, yeah.
This is a question maybe for the lawyers, if, or maybe if-
We'll ask, and then we can, we'll see what we have.
Yeah, there for you. You have 12% affordability, I think, in here. Is there any flexibility on increasing that? I imagine, I know it's economics, I know it's expensive to build per unit, but something to think about, maybe?
Certainly something we're happy to discuss.
Okay. Then one more question. Are there any sustainability efforts of these buildings?
So I'm going to answer that from a site, site perspective. This, this will be a, I don't know how to describe it. We're trying to use green, blue, everything we can, due to the fact that, again, all the green you see, 90% of it's on concrete, so it'll be sustainable, because we're going to have to make this kind of use its own stormwater to thrive. And there are products that do that, so that's, that, the idea that this, from a site perspective, sustainability is like the key element to this, which we didn't really have a lot of in the first project, where we have a lot of here. This green, this, all this green space actually acts as part of the stormwater system.
Thank you.
I can turn over to Ray if there are any other questions. We can always go back.
No, of course. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, for the record, my name is Ray Sullivan of Sullivan Architectural Group. Uh, we're located at one fifty-five Broad Street in Milford. Prior to that, I was at Lantern Hill at, uh, twelve twenty-six Post Road, you know, across from Malta. Um, so just, just for the record, as part of the submission, there's a series of plans and, and the, um, the title to each plan shows what elevation it is. So, so that's a plan of the entire site of the lower level garage and it says what elevation it is. When you flip to the next page, um, you'll see that the upper level of the garage is approximately elevation twenty-five, uh, which is the, the lower level elevation of the back or perimeter buildings. Uh, and then when you, and, and this, so, so this is below Ash Creek visually. Uh, and when you go to the next, you'll actually see for the first time, you know, kind of all the floors of all the buildings. So, so this was submitted and, and in this plan is every unit, every unit type, every unit size. So we're, we're preliminary, but, 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 you know, you know, everything's, you know, been established and published in here. And there are also, uh, building sections so you could see how tall it is relative to Ash Creek or how, if you cut a section in the, in the opposite direction, how, how tall it is. So, uh.
Sheriff, uh, Leedy.
Just visually, will the parking be visible from the ground or will it, or will you see basically residential and?
You'll only see residential. You'll never see the garage unless you enter the site and get all the way to the back.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, Emmeline, is it possible to go back to the site plan just for a second? Thank you. So if possible, I know you've been asking Earl a lot of technical questions. Uh, if, if I could just spend five minutes on the concept of how we got here. So, um, so when, when you look at the site plan, um, uh, when there was discussion of going from, you know, my numbers may get mixed up, but, you know, from three seventy-four to six seventy-two or, you know, whatever number we are. Um, you know, there was a lot of discussion about how, how the site plan was gonna be, uh, you know, how it was gonna evolve. And so, so, so our first path at that was if you take Ash Creek Boulevard, we actually designed two large buildings that were curved, much like the approval twenty years ago. And they're actually connected up on the upper level. So it really kind of created this facade all the way along Ash Creek Boulevard. Um, so, um, what, what, you know, what, what happened is, you know, we, you know, we, you know, we talked to, to staff and, uh, and the staff was very kind of, uh, uh, really informative with their comments. Uh, there was a collaboration and so, so what we, what we realized we wanted to do was instead of kind of create that wall that was originally approved years ago and that we were going back to, uh, what we did was, was we changed the concept of the plan and we turned all the buildings perpendicular to Ash Creek Boulevard. So as you drove through, you experienced a series of view corridors, you know, through the project. So the, um, so as the, as, as the buildings, um, you know, as buildings five, six and seven, and particularly six and seven, as they began to front Ash Creek Boulevard, um, what we did was we spread them out just a little bit so that they can create more frontage on Ash Creek Boulevard. And then what we did was we, we created this, this exterior courtyard, the street front courtyard, uh, that encapsulated the fronts of those two buildings and Ash Creek. So, so, you know, really kind of, um, you know, you know, brought life to the, to the, to the road itself. Emmeline, may we go to the next one?
No.
So these are just some preliminary sketches, um, you know, but, but, you know, so, you know, what happens is that, is that, is that that building right there is four stories. So that building's forty-four feet from the curb elevation, you know, of Ash Creek Boulevard. Uh, and then what happens, it's probably, it's hard to see here, but, but, you know, you know, you know, as it, as it began to front Ash Creek Boulevard, we dropped it down to four stories. They're, they're really five stories behind that. Those buildings are approximately fifty-five feet off of Ash Creek Boulevard. So they go from forty-four to fifty-five feet. And then there's another sketch I'll show you. There's, there's actually a small section where we have three stories. So we want to really kind of work on the scale to make sure that, 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 uh, that, that, uh, front courtyard uh, and the connection between these two buildings, uh, really brought life to the street, uh, and brought it down to, you know, as human a scale as, as, as we possibly could.
Quick question, Commissioner Berman.
Quick question. Um, uh, and, and did you decide consciously to articulate them like townhouses? Do you think that's gonna be in the ultimate?
I, I, I got a, a slide.
You got that. Got it. I'm ahead of you. Thanks.
So, um, the, uh, so, so quickly, there, there was a question about did, did COVID change the design? Uh, and so, so what, what happens is we have a clubhouse in the backside of this park and we'll, we'll talk about the park in a second. Uh, but, but, you know, what, what happened is so we've got these, we've got all this street front activity right here, uh, in two buildings that are spread out. So what I envision on this right side building is on the far side that we have a cafe and that the rest of that entire area is really offices, conference rooms, Zoom work sta- you know, you know, Zoom, small Zoom rooms, open workstations and support for all of that. So, um, you know, it's so many, we, we all know that due to recent events, so many more people are working at home. Uh, it's also nice to leave your apartment to, to work too. So, so here you can leave your apartment, stay in the complex, be next to a cafe, work with other people. Um, and, and we're providing all of that, you know, on this site. And, and what we want to do, and we envisioned during the nicer weather, like what's coming upon us now, is that, is that people are outside and, and high top tables, you know, uh, working their laptops and they're out in the street and they're going for coffee and, or they might be going across the street. I might just come back from the train station. So, um, so, so, so yes, there, there, there was some consideration for that. Usually that area is in the clubhouse, which is way in the back. But there you have a series of rooms that tend to be louder. You know, you got a club room, you got a rec room, you got game tables and all that stuff. And then, then you've got these, these, these business workstations. So we separated it, greatly enhanced it, um, and, and put it out front, you know, on, on display. The, 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 the left side building is meant to be all the leasing offices. And, and we think that there's enough room in that area to possibly bring the fitness center forward. Uh, and, and the reason for doing that is, is, you know, that's an activity that, that, you know, you know, you, you can go by Gold's Gym or whatever gym, you see people working out and, and you could, you know, this, this is, there's gonna be great walkways around this area. Um, and so, you know, the thought was to, let's take this ground floor, let's spread it out along the, along Ash Creek Boulevard. Let's open up the business so you can see everything and, 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 and let's, 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 let's enhance, let's bring people outside and create activities there that bring them outside. But as you look inside, we've got really what tend to be storefront looking buildings with large glass, you know, windows, uh, you know, columns and signage bands that you would see more downtown and, you know, in light fixtures and awnings and all that. So we want to create that image here and, and, and that's why we took buildings six and seven, what, drop them down, widen them a little bit as they hit Ash Creek and, and, and tried to create that sense of, of, of place and activity out on the street. Uh, Emmeline, can we go to the next one?
Would that be sort of like a WeWorks and a cafe?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it, it, it would be, you know, you know, sometimes we, we use the term WeWork, you know, we're the WeWork area. But, but really this is a, this is a business center because it's really, um, uh, you know, it's, it's much more than, than six workstations and, and a couple of conference rooms, you know, you know, you know, this, this is probably gonna be a few thousand square feet of space. You know, it's really gonna be something that the residents can, 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 can use. And, and again, we, we mentioned before, it's just so, when, when you are in an apartment, if it's a one-bedroom apartment, you know, it's so nice to get out of your apartment to go to work, but yet you're really staying at, at, at home. So I, I think we're, we're trying to generate the, the best of both worlds. Um, this, this, so this image right here, this is building six and that's building seven. So you see that, that these two buildings on seven or th- these two, uh, sections of seven right here and this section of six are three stories. So we brought that scale down even a little bit more, made it a little bit more human scale. And then what happens is the, you know, the, you know, the plaza kind of extends into that area and then beyond that, it hits the park that Earl's developing. Um, and that park is about, it's over three-quarters of an acre. And I think if we took all the nooks and crannies of it, we'd probably get it to an acre, you know, but it's, it's, it's in a square box. It's thirty-six thousand square feet and there's a lot of activity on that. And what's great about it is that it's, it, you know, it really creates a focus, uh, you know, through the site because you can look down through the park, you'll see the rec building on the far end of it and that has a visual connection to the pool. So, so that access is pretty strong, you know, you know, you know, for the residents. That's why I, I, that's why I think there's gonna be a lot of walking, a lot of activity here. Uh, you know, we're, you know, we're really trying to, uh, kind of create a site that, 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 that the residents are gonna use. So, I don't know if I'm off. Uh, who we go, yeah, okay. So, yeah, let's, let's go to that one. So, so, you know, that, that is, that's the same thing, just, just a slight aerial. And again, these are just early sketches, but, but we've got this plaza that, that, that comes along six, you know, drops in to where the park begins, then comes all the way, you know, along seven and it fronts Ash Creek all the way along the way. Uh, Earl's done a good job with grading so that, uh, for the majority of that courtyard, even though Ash Creek is sloping, uh, you know, part of that courtyard might be two feet above, parts level, some, some's two feet below and he's gonna create those transition with planters and whatnot, but, but, you know, we've been able to, to stay, you know, you know, relatively level with Ash Creek. And, and again, so what's gonna happen is you'll drive by this, you will never see a parking garage. You know, so all you're gonna see of these residences. So, um, if, if, if we could, Emmeline, go to the next one. I don't know if you can make that a little bit smaller. Yeah. So the, a- 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 again, the, the, you know, the staff had great comments in our interaction with them uh, as to how we're gonna design these buildings. And, um, you know, the, the, the buildings that are currently approved, the three hundred and seventy-four units, whatever it is, you know, they're, they're, they're nice looking buildings, but they're, you know, they're all, um, you know, they're, 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 they're an apartment building. You know, if there's apartment building A, there's B, you know, they're, you know, they're larger buildings. There's the main entrance. Uh, but as a architectural composition, it's, it's, it's one, one building. And so what we tried to do here, or what we are, you know, attempting to create is, is we're attempting to create kind of an, an urban uh, cityscape, you know, so that, uh, if you walk down, uh, a, 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 a ci- a nice city street with trees on it and four or five-story buildings, uh, and it's a series of brownstones, you experience a, a, a series of different architectural elevations. Uh, so there wants to be, you know, diversity in that, in that look, but it, but also wants to follow a common theme so it, so that they aren't just thrown together. So, so that's what we're doing here. Um, so when you first pull in, uh, to the, to the, to the property, if you, if you go over the railroad tracks and take a, a right into the property, you'll go through the first inner street. And that first inner street has parallel parking on both sides here. It's got sidewalks, nice wide sidewalks, and from the curb to the front of the building, uh, there's approximately twenty feet. So if we have a five-foot, six-foot sidewalk, uh, and then we've got a lot of area for landscaping. So it's not a hard surface, you know, there, there's, 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 there's a lot of landscaping, there's a lot of green in this.
Commissioner Berman.
The, the, but just one, one.
Go ahead.
The, the, along with the, 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 you know, the, the brownstone concept and, and the idea of making them, them look individual, I think it's hard to see from, from back here, but, but, you know, our plan is not on every unit, but periodically create front stoops like you see in a brownstone if you walk down the city street. So there will be a main entrance to the building, but you can have entrance into a ground floor unit. We can create stoops up to that and it, it, it just kind of breaks down the thought of this one large building and it creates this, this, or enhances the, the creation of, of, of this street front and, and a composition of multiple buildings.
You, you read my mind because, um, in, uh, the pre-app for eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike, we saw there were certain units that would, would be accessible, uh, from the street level. The ground floor, a number of the ground floor units would have access to the dwelling from the street level. And, and you said that's, that's something that you're considering as well?
Yes, absolutely. Because I, I think that, 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 that ties down, it, you know, it, it anchors the building down on the, on, on, on the site and, and, and helps create the image of this, this urban street front, you know, if.
It's additional five-story walk-up.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, you're, you're, that, you know, Earl, you know, Earl and I work together a lot. We collaborate and sometimes he's designing my buildings and sometimes I'm messing up with his site. But, but yeah, it's, it's, it, you know, it, 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 it really creates the image of, of, of the brownstone walk-up. And, 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 and we're not gonna do it to everyone, but I think we can create that image.
And just to be, the five stories that you're proposing is already currently allowed in this zone?
Yeah, I believe that, that it's height.
You have a height limitation. We're, we're underneath the height limitation.
I think that, you know, like on this side of the street, it's.
No, no, that's fine. My only con- I wouldn't, if we're, if you go to an application, I'd probably avoid using the word urban in Fairfield.
Okay, all right. I'll, 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 I'll lose that one, but there's, there's just.
I know exactly what you mean and I, yeah.
Cityscape?
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood scape, okay.
Yeah, I just, just a thought. Um, um, but I understand your point. I just wanted to confirm the height. Thank you.
Um, and, and, uh, again, in the, uh, so in this, in this plan set, on the lower level parking garage plan, it shows the connection of the tunnel, you know, into this area.
Into the gar- the garage?
Into the garage, yeah.
So that's not, would that be a public, wouldn't be, is it a public roadway into the garage?
Yes. Well, you know what? That garage is accessible only from one spot. So it's really meant to be an overflow, I think, from the, the concourse. It's not, the, the concourse building is designed, the garage has been designed, there's no interconnectivity between the lowest level, which is there now, a mid-level, which are being built in, and then the upper level of the concourse. But there's no interconnectivity. So this would help connect that level with Ash Creek. It actually connects, um, to the, the mid-level, but that's.
But you wouldn't have parking on this site for the train station for the public?
Not necessarily. There's, there's not, there's not designated parking for that. But there is general overflow because we have more spaces than we need.
For the hotel?
In the garage, for everything. We have, I think, over three hundred extra spaces in the garage, you know, so.
Public parking or?
So some of it could be designated public if it's near the tunnel.
You're, you're providing fifteen seventy-four, but only need twelve hundred for the metro.
Can't imagine though Metro's gonna watch their trains, uh, people that park there.
I don't think it's necessarily for the train stations, probably more for the concourse building.
Okay.
So the other uses in the concourse building can, would be able to.
I know you have retail.
Walk across and go up without going outside.
And I know you have commercials as well, so.
Yes. And, and again, that would be open to the public. Um, I think there are certain ways. I mean, obviously the street has to be open. So there are private areas like the pool areas and the main courtyard, which are totally kind of private, residents only. The drive down the middle between five and six is open to the public. There's not a gate, at least at this point, there's not intended to be a gate.
Okay.
One more question, and I kind of missed one of the time. I know we've gone way past a half hour. Um, but what are the vacancy rates in the current building?
Number four.
Oh, sorry, the number, sorry, the other buildings in that area, do we know?
I don't.
I think trademarks full, isn't it?
I don't think there are many.
Yeah, I thought, yeah.
Uh, Camfield, you said is?
Ninety-five.
Oh, yeah.
Ninety-five percent.
Yeah, yeah.
First building, yeah.
Still look right away and there's.
About ninety-five percent.
Yeah, okay.
Which I assume is the general turnover rate.
So, so there was, there was a question of comparison. I'll, I'll leave it at this. Um, if, if we went back to the currently approved site plan, if you look at that, you see five buildings or six buildings, five in the hotel and you see nothing but parking. You see nothing but asphalt. So it's, it's slab on grade. Um, you know, it was intended to, gee, it's less expensive to, to do that. We, we originally designed the buildings with parking underneath the buildings. Uh, but, but, so, you know, it, it, it evolved to, you know, you know, uh, as, as Earl, Earl said, you know, it's, it's, it's all at grade. So you look at buildings and you look at parking and in some islands in between the parking spaces, you see some trees. But, you know, what, what Earl's been able to produce here is we really have a, a really vibrant site plan. When you look at that, there's a lot of green. And, you know, some of it's are in smaller pockets, but if you lived on the first floor unit and you had ten to fifteen feet of landscaping in front of you, you feel so much more, that, that's, that's such a warmer space than if, uh, the headlights pulled out five feet from the, from the building and, and went in. And, and, and that image that we saw with the townhouses, you know, will be consistent as you, as you drive through the facility. So, you know, I'll, I'll leave it at that because I know you.
The next part is, Commissioner Ford will have a question, uh, but the concourse.
Yes, thank you. That's.
No, yeah, I didn't want to leave without that.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, sorry, I said, was there a half hour? No, we're at the concourse.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I.
Um, so great. Uh, so good evening. Stuart Johnson, I'm a principal of Minnewasco Architects and Planners. Uh, we are a one-hundred-person architectural firm, um, very active here in the Fairfield County area. Uh, pleased to share with you, uh, the concept, um, design and vision for redevelopment for the concourse portion of the site. So the first exhibit we have up here, I believe, was the previously approved concourse building, which was a mixed-use office building. Um, it was a curtain wall facade, a lot of glass on the exterior facade, uh, related really more towards when this was more of a commercially, an, an office-oriented development. Um, obviously a plan for some similar things of providing a pedestrian connectivity, uh, to the train station. Um, if we can advance the slide to the next exhibit.
But that, and that also met our height requirements?
Uh, I believe that did meet the height requirements. It was a five-story building, uh, measured from the average grade at the curb line of Ash Creek Boulevard. Uh, I believe that building was approximately seventy-five feet in building height. That's correct.
Thank you.
So, uh, without further ado, the first image we have here is an illustrative perspective view and I think we're zoomed in here all the way. Um, but the building's a vibrant building. It's a, it's, it, it has eight levels to it, um, of mixed-use occupancy over two levels of structured parking. Uh, specifically the ground floor of the building provides for a new boutique hotel. Um, lobby entrance with hotel function, uh, like a bar and restaurant area at the ground floor as well as some meeting room space on the ground floor. Um, immediately, and, and the entrance of the hotel is centered about mid-block here. Um, immediately adjacent to that is a, uh, private secure vestibule for the office components of the project. So there's two floors of office.
The mid-level with a speed ramp that is, provides access off of Ash Creek Boulevard. Ground floor being pocheted in yellow, essentially the lobby entrances for hotel, office transit, two levels of office space, and then the hotel and restaurant use above that. And then lastly, that brings us back to the perspective view where we began. And if there are specific questions, it sounds like there are, I'm happy to answer those.
What's the height?
That's a great question, right? So the height of the building, it's approximately 110 feet from the finished first level at the ground floor to the roof of the building, so to the roof of the restaurant.
Which would be how much larger than our current regulations?
Right, so if I could just finish. So in terms of height, it's about 110 feet from the front door of the building to the roof. Your definition of building height is measured from the average grade along the curb line of Ash Creek Boulevard, the closest frontage. So the building height, we expect to be approximately 118 feet, 118 to 120 feet, measured from that average grade, because again, there's some slope to Ash Creek Boulevard. And building height is also measured from the highest ceiling height, it's an average between the highest ceiling height of the highest occupied floor to the parapet of the building, so it's about 118 feet. I think maybe your next question was how high was?
What's our regs? I just forgot.
So I believe you-
Seventy?
Seventy, from the same reference point.
Yeah, so 140, about 45 feet higher?
So this building's about 40, plus or minus 40 feet taller, that's correct.
I think what may be relevant to the height question too, this is not as exciting as Stuart's drawing, it's boring, reg change stuff that I was talking about before, but we would propose a regulation amendment, or are contemplating that, a formal application before you all, that would allow additional building height. But that additional building height would come with, you know, it's not just ad right over 70 feet, there would be specific controls. The ones that we contemplated in preparing our pre-app package tonight was number one, there has to be a special permit, something that's specifically requested and approved by all of you for the final application. And number two, anything above that, you know, wherever that line at 70 feet in the sky is, that has to be related directly to providing non-residential use. And that's what really drove the hybrid, the coming together of that hotel building and the originally approved concourse building, right? If we want to map, or really achieve the appropriate amount of density that you can get here, get on this asset that the town has right next to the train station, you really have to concentrate your commercial uses. And the concourse building provides a terrific opportunity to do that. It's just very difficult to get the right number of residential homes on this site without taking, you know, utilizing the concourse opportunity there.
But at one point though, we had this hotel on the, I'll say, left side of Ash Creek using that. The idea of moving it here, combining it with the concourse, was to maximize residential on the left, and then see if we can get, see, put this together on the, in this concourse area?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And I assume then that was done intentionally, again, to maximize the residential?
Yeah, and that blend, what it comes out to in the end, again, is close to that 80/20, 80% residential and 20% non-residential that the TOD plan calls for. And I think, you know, something generally that we see, you know, you need, you need a vibrant and sufficient residential base, really, for those commercial, non-residential uses to follow. So that's, you know, that's what's driving all of this.
And I mean, lastly, from a site, you know, from a site planning standpoint, I think we heard some of this from Earl and Ray, but on the other side of Ash Creek Boulevard, it's a much different feel, right? It's a more walkable community, it's a neighborhood, it's place making, the different street typologies. And this side of Ash Creek Boulevard, closer to the train station, closer to more commercial uses, we felt this was obviously a more ideal location for that hotel. And lastly, again, I'll just add to the height, but, you know, we thought about that. And, you know, we spent a lot of care and time, certainly in the renderings and the massings you're seeing here, there's a reason why we stepped that building facade back, right? So we were respectful of that. We weren't proposing a eight-story building wall, right? So that building is 130 feet currently shown there, approximately 130 feet from the front door to the curb on Ash Creek Boulevard. There's new streetscape and landscaping, which helps to break down the scale and reading of it. But again, stepping the hotel levels back above that third floor, I think breaks down the scale and reading of the building. So certainly, in the discussion regarding the building height, there can also be design standards that are crafted, you know, that help to guide that.
Yeah, because I mean, obviously the height is a concern. I know I'll put that out there pretty bluntly, I don't, I'll speak for myself, but maybe others as well. I mean, add to the fact that the, you're going off of the curb cut of a road that's probably intentionally hired, because it was initially brought, put over the, to get over the train station, I mean, that also adds to the height as well. So I know that's our regulations, but, you know, it wasn't like a regular, normal streets, curb sizes or grade that are, you know, normal topography. This was brought up intentionally, again, to get over the, the train tracks. So add that to A-plus store, whatever it was, I mean, it's going to look as a, this side looks, you know, reasonable, it's a beautiful building, don't get me wrong, look on the other side though, coming from, what is it, Black Rock, I mean, it's going to look, you know, a lot bigger, obviously.
So on Black Rock, I mean, the same step back that you're seeing here, above that third level, right? And so we saw it in the building section, we saw it in the building plan. So we do have two more floors below, right? We have two levels of structured parking, but your sightlines from Black Rock are also much more further away, right? The scale from the pedestrian view and, you know, perhaps that's something we developed, right, to share with you all, to share you what the massing of the building looked like as perceived from the public right away from Black Rock. And certainly when you're in that lower surface parking lot, you're in a different realm, you're in a different, you know, a different experience, you're experiencing the building differently.
Can I just add something?
Please.
So, you know, one of the challenges here are the different competing factors within the regulations. There is, I believe, a strong desire for den housing in this location. It's the right place for it, on top of the train station, want to see housing here. We've also got that, right now, that 70/30 split requirement. We've proposed an 80/20 split. If you all are more comfortable with less commercial, I think that Accurate would be comfortable shrinking the size of it. It's just that we can only put it in so many places, right? You have to move the puzzle pieces around to make everything fit. We don't want to cover the whole site, we want green space, so you have to go up in order to, you know, get that ratio. But if that's something that would interest you, that's certainly something that we could consider.
Okay.
So does this proposal have 30% commercial or 20%?
It has 20% commercial, so if you wanted to reduce that, then we could lose some of the height in the, in the commercial space.
Nice question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Francis, go ahead.
Could you tell us the size of the office space in this concourse building, the square footage on those two floors?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So each of those floors have approximately plus or minus 20,000 square feet, so it's about 40,000 square feet of office space on levels two and three. There's about 4,400 square feet on the ground floor, so in total, I think we're looking about 44,400 square feet of office space. That's just office, and then obviously the hotel function and program and restaurant as well on top of that.
And then Building Five, what's the square footage of that building? Of course, it's, you said it's five stories, but I mean, what's, how much is each story? A thousand square feet?
Well, they get that, let me just, because I think somebody else is looking that up. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. So I guess echo the chair's thoughts about the creativity and the attractiveness of the design, obviously a lot of thought went into it. And in many ways, it's a great improvement over the previously approved. Two thoughts. One is in terms of the concourse, it serves a lot of different purposes, and if we could see examples from other communities where a building successfully served all those different purposes, transit hub, commercial, hotel, restaurant, I think that would give us some additional comfort. And second, Commissioner Harrison's point about affordable housing, you know, the needle has moved since the 2019 TOD study recommended that we increase really modestly from 10% affordable housing to 12%, which we did in 2020. You might want to consider tying an additional height bonus to provision of additional affordable housing elsewhere on the site. I just, I put that out there.
Do we have an answer from Commissioner Francis?
125,000.
125,000 square feet, Commissioner Francis.
Is that per floor?
Total.
Okay, so it's about 50, 25,000 a floor?
Yeah.
Because I was going to suggest, if you want to lower the concourse building or remove the office function from that building, you could swap it out with some of Building Five, part of Building Five, you know, perhaps make it the lower two floors and residential above, just a suggestion to keep the height of the concourse building less, since there's no real need to put office there.
I think that our goal is to maintain that residential density at where it is, so if we were to swap it out, we would end up losing units. But in terms of the office space, I mean, I don't think that it's a secret that office space is challenging right now to lease. So, you know, again, if the commission desires us to reduce that, I don't, I think that we could certainly consider that.
Okay. I think, Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, I have to say, I would hate to lose any more commercial space here. I mean, the point of TOD is to have a vibrant community of mixed-use, you know, retail, you know, housing, so I really would hate to go down any below 20%. I just, you know, I just still think that would be the right traction for me, anyway.
Just mindful of time, but Commissioner Braun, go ahead.
I just have four points going forward, not for tonight, but number one, I would like to see wetlands review of the stewardship easement, or however it's being managed next door, because when I drive by, I don't see much positive happening, it doesn't look like anything good is happening there. Who's responsible, how's it being managed, how's the water going to go, to replenish it? A concern about the height increase, so I would like to have that specifically addressed by our conservation commission or our wetlands agency, and also DEP. I'd like to have an answer on just where the plastic membrane was, and where it is now, and how you're dealing with the contamination that remains on most of the site. Also, our affordable housing committee last time around, I believe they wrote a letter saying they recommended 15%. That's what I'd be looking for, a minimum. Anything else is just going to affect our ratio in a very negative way. This is almost a doubling, I think it's 1.8 times the number of residential in the original one, so if we're only doing 12%, man, that's, you know, killing our ratio. Thanks, that's my summary comment.
Commissioner Ford, then.
Thank you. So the hotel, if you can, you know, you may not be able to do it tonight, but next door, what is it, 81 Black Rock? What's, we just had a-
You're talking about the building that we're doing?
Yeah, the bar, the-
You're talking about the bar, or the one that we're coming to?
Yeah, the bar, then the building next to it.
The building next to it was 81, I don't know what the bar was.
Yeah, I thought it was 81 too. Can you just give me a-
111, 111 Black Rock.
I'd like to see a perspective, like a side-by-side, in terms of height, like how much bigger this building is than that building, and the design, because I'd like to see, you know, I know, I don't think you guys control that space, but it'd be nice for it to flow nicely into the next space, so it looks congruent, it doesn't look like you're leaving one space and entering another. Did you say there was an outdoor rooftop deck, or is that glassed in?
There is. So in the center of that image there, we saw a glassed-in area of about 3,400 square feet, and where you see those red, what look like circles, those are umbrellas. So we envision there's about, just under 4,000 square feet, you know, some of that's going to be landscaped, right? So we see a planter, we're proposing along the edge of the building to hold people back from that edge. There's going to be some tree balls and planters up top, so yes, there is outdoor space.
So it'll be a portion, like it'd be indoor and outdoor on the same-
Indoor and outdoor use on the same floor.
Okay. I think that's it for me.
Commissioner, Corcello?
Yeah, so I think 1,574 parking spaces is a lot of parking, and seems like most of that is structured, which I, my understanding is structured parking is pretty expensive. So I'd be curious to hear what could be doable, if there are 300 more spaces than you're saying are needed, what could be doable if there was some reduction in parking? I mean, does that get the level of affordability up, for example?
Go ahead, Commissioner Lewis, yeah. This is the time, I think, for kind of making that final comment.
I'm not sure if we've seen it, but have we seen a rendering or a perspective from the east of the concourse building?
So we have submitted, as part of the application, we have color-rendered building elevations, so we do have a building elevation that shows that. We don't have a rendering, but we're happy to get in and study that. Again, it was shown, we have that same step back, but on the other side, you know, naturally the site falls to full building stories, right? So it's, it's almost 25 feet lower there, so we have two levels of exposed structure parking.
Thank you.
One more question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Francis.
The dog park recreation sport area over here, will it have hours, or what kind of games are going to be played there?
I don't think that we've programmed it at this point, but generally speaking, all the amenities is based on, you know, hours of operation. If there's something that we should consider, we'd certainly be open to that.
Mr. Wilson, when did we have our TOD regulations in this? We adopted TOD regulations here, when did we do that?
Well, it's mixed. The original TOD regs for this proposal goes back to 2000.
No, just like with trademark, when they came in, we had, didn't we have this special, like an overlay?
We do, there's two, there's two different overlays.
Okay, that's where my confusion was coming in.
One was just tweaked in 2020.
2020, it was modified, introduced residential use, which wasn't originally contemplated.
Yeah, okay.
So it was recently amended in 2020.
Okay. I mean, certainly a lot's happened between where we were in 2020 and now, so I mean, I think we're going to be sensitive to changes that are going to be substantial from that. I think the commission has been very flexible with regulation amendments over the years to make, to be very proactive and working, but I would suggest, you know, especially for height like this, I mean, that's my major concern. Everything else, I mean, in my mind, looked very attractive, the green space coming back was great, and good use of the, good use of the property considering what's not there in general. So, I mean, overall, especially, I'll say, to the left of Ash Creek, you know, I found very favorable, to the extent that anything, to the extent that work can be done in this, on the concourse, to reduce it, I think would be beneficial, because I think not just opposition, potential opposition maybe, or pushback is a better word, from the commission, but potential opposition from the, from the public is, I would suspect, will be centered on that.
Would it be possible, and it may not be possible, but would it be possible for us to get a sense from the commission on where everyone stands with that, in terms of how we balance all of those competing factors? As I, you know, Commissioner Harrison mentioned that she feels it's important to maintain that 20%, we hear you on the, on the reduction of the height, I know the green space is important, the density is important, so if we could get a little bit of direction, that would, that would really help us.
Kind of hard in this case, because it's a lot of 40,000-foot view thing. I mean, we're certainly not going to take any votes or anything like that, and I think you've got enough, I think we've given comments, except if anybody else wants to add to what they've said.
In terms of the hotel, I think what I like about it is we weren't starting for a hotel in this area, especially in the greater Bridgeport area, Holiday Inclusive, I don't think anybody would love to go there, but, you know, 118 rooms is half the size of the Tremont area, you know, so, you know, so the height doesn't bother me, you know, but I can understand neighbors saying, you know, we, you used to be able to see out, now we can't, and I fully expect that objection. But I remember as a kid, this site, you know, where the big giant buildings and boulevards and, you know, you couldn't drive down that part of Black Rock Turnpike at 3 o'clock, because that was a shift change, so, you know, and that hasn't happened probably in 30 years. So I remember when it was like that. So I, you know, the density doesn't bother me, but I think we have to be able to balance the density, you know, with, you know, what our overall goals are. So there's going to have to be some give and take, and I'm willing, I'm flexible, I like to, I like to plan, you know, so I think I would be willing to be flexible, but, you know, if we get more hotel, I think we're starting for hotel rooms in this area, and I'm glad you're building it. I was told years ago, no one would ever build a hotel on this site by a very prominent developer in this area, so no one's ever going to touch it. So I'm glad it's, the concept is here, and hopefully it gets started.
Yeah, I mean, a lot, as you said, I mean, this is a, what is it, pre-application, what is the proper term for it, non-binding pre-application review, I mean, give as much comments as we can, feedback, a lot of moving, a lot of moving parts. I mean, I think our track record is fair, that we are very flexible in thinking and working with developers, and if you give us good reasons to move away from regulation amendments, that has happened in the past, but again, we just had these in 2020, a lot has changed, I'll grant you that, and I just, you know, as it being non-binding and with comments being made, I'm not sure, unless anybody wants to supplement what they've done, I mean-
This is really helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, you come to us with something, I mean, my, you know, with a full presentation, and how the public reacts, and how everything else comes, comes to place, I mean, my comments may be a little different than that, so that's the whole point of the non-binding aspect of it, so. And with that, is there any other final thoughts? Commissioner Francis?
Yeah, I think it's much more attractive than it was, and I really commend you for it. And we do have an awful lot of apartments over there, and then Bridgeport just built all those, and I guess we're going to build ours where our theater was. So it, it wouldn't bother me to see a little less residential, to get the, to move the office possibly out of the hotel, but that's all.
The pedestrian bridge from Black Rock, I know that's, I think that's a state, I think the state was building that, right? Wasn't that the plan there?
Bridgeport, Bridgeport.
Bridgeport, oh God. All right, so maybe-
We have had comments.
Maybe we, hopefully, Bridgeport will, you know, will do it. I remember they had a ribbon cutting or something years and years ago, but nothing ever happened, so, okay.
All right, can we leave it there? Thank you for your presentation.
You really appreciate it. Great presentation.
Yeah, great project.
So let me call the next item for, in the public hearing, zoning regulation amendment, application of SpotOn Fairfield LLC to amend Section 12.4.12, the zoning regulations, and 2269 Post Road, special permanent application of SpotOn LLC to establish a veterinary hospital, including a dog boarding and daycare in the design commercial district. As I said in the beginning, the applicant has decided, at its rights, to provide its rebuttal in writing, which we have in reviewing it, is a proper rebuttal. We now have all the materials we need in the record for this, for these two applications, so I will close the public hearing on those two items. Calling now, our zoning regulation amendment, application of Post Road Residential, Inc. to amend Section 13.14 of the Transit Oriented Development Park. Attorney Fallon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is John Fallon, I'm pleased to be here tonight, representing Post Road Residential. I'll introduce our team and our principal, my client, in a minute. We're very excited to present to you tonight amendments that will allow for the creation of what we believe, and we hope you'll agree, to be a very vibrant, mixed-use community on an extremely important gateway, if I may call it that, property in the Transit Oriented Development Park. This is actually the second step of the process, you had a pre-app on this last year, I think, at some point in time. Now we come before you tonight, seeking the specific text amendments that will allow us to facilitate this project, and at the same time, then hopefully move on to seek a full special permit and site plan application with the details that would be expected in such an application. I use the word excited, I think we're excited because this proposal, among other things, is made by a very preeminent developer with strong personal and business roots in Fairfield, and a very proven track record, working with the architectural firm of Beinfield Architecture with regard to creating exceptional communities, and a great emphasis on the aesthetics that have made them showcases for quality development. And you'll hear from Mr. Tom Montelli in a moment, on behalf of Post Road Residential. We're also excited that this proposal facilitated by the proposed amendments will, as we move past the pandemic, be a continued beacon of Fairfield's economic strength, its recovery, while helping to ensure the success of the Transit Oriented Development Park that we've all worked so hard on in so many ways, for going on 20 years now, and which your last pre-app discussed in some way. We're also excited because the amendments that are proposed tonight, and I will go through them specifically and quickly, are in fact designed to achieve the goals of the TOD study that was done in 2019, and most in fact will seek to implement specific recommendations of the TOD study. Overall, our goal, as I said, is to create a vibrant, mixed-use community on this property that will address current market demands for housing, with, as we will elaborate on, sensitive consideration to the current work-from-home remote options that are in demand as a result of the pandemic we've lived through. Specifically, as I set the context, the proposed text amendments are to Section 1314 of the Transit Oriented Development Park, the TODP, and they seek to implement those recommendations of the TOD study of August 2019. As this commission knows, the TOD study was adopted by the commission as an analysis of the Commerce Drive Area Designated District. As referenced in the TOD study of 2019, the original Commerce Drive study at the time of the Fairfield Metro Train Station originally opened, established a vision for a transit-oriented development, including a mix of transit-supported uses. At the time of the study, there was a focus on large-scale office development, but as the 2019 study, which you adopted, made clear that there is now a very different marketplace, and therefore, the town's vision with regard to the development of this important overlay district needed to be refocused, and indeed, the 2019 TOD study referenced that. One of those changes that has come about particularly since the, as a result of the pandemic, is what I would call the reimagination of the concept of what an office means, and a great deal of emphasis of work-from-home options. So you'll hear in our presentation tonight, there's a specific amendment that we think addresses that change. The goal under the TOD study basically was to create, and I quote, "a district to work, live, learn, and play," noble goals. We think that we have a development that can do that, and we think the proposed text amendments that we seek to implement tonight are very important and necessary in order to achieve those goals. What we're going to do tonight is, we're going to offer the amendments to you, but to put them in proper context, we will provide an overview of our vision for the development of this property, what will be in effect the ultimate special permit and site plan application we'll bring to you, with an emphasis on why these amendments, as proposed, have been so carefully thought out and are vital in order to make this vision feasible and viable and a reality. And Mr. Seal and Painter of Beinfield Architecture will take you through that. So he'll give you an overview of our, our vision, our site plan, but he'll intersperse in that the specific references to the amendments that we seek, and then I will come back after he's done that and lay that context for you, and briefly describe the specific amendments to you. But before we do that, I'd introduce Tom Montelli. He'd like to provide some background with regard to the experience and track record of Post Road Residential and the Beinfield team, especially with reference to its local roots and commitment to this community. And I think he'll also make clear the intense amount of planning we've done before the pre-app, since the pre-app, and in anticipation of this hearing tonight, to ensure that we bring before you a development that is exciting, and will meet the goals of the TOD study and your own regulations. So, Tom.
Yeah, do you mind just putting on the second page of the presentation? Thank you, John. Good evening, I appreciate your time today, and as Attorney Fallon said, we're extremely excited to be here. This is a long time in the making, and we certainly appreciate your guys' time staying late tonight. My name is Tom Montelli, I'm one of the partners at Post Road Residential. Our office is in Fairfield, Connecticut, right near the Community Theater. I'm joined by a partner of mine, John McFadden from Post Road, and the other partner at our firm is my father, Andy Montelli. A quick little summary about our company, if you don't know us. Like I said, we've been in Fairfield for a long time, both my father, myself, and John all live in Fairfield, in the beach neighborhood or on Beach Road. And we don't do a whole lot of development projects. We're a small company, we own the company ourselves, which allows us to be creative and do less projects. We don't have to answer to anybody. And that's one of the things about being small, we really like. It affords us the ability to be creative and design communities that really enhance the neighborhood that they're in. Beinfield, Sealan Pater, and Brian Goddard have joined us from Beinfield Architecture. This project would be the 10th project our team has worked on together. And that's really significant because when you have a team that knows how to execute together, especially in neighborhoods like this, it really means a lot. And there's a few pictures on the presentation board of recent projects of ours. Many of those are actually the Anchorage and Fairfield on Uncle Road that we developed and completed a few years ago. The unique thing about Post Road and Beinfield working together is that we both sort of have that entrepreneurial, creative aspect to our firm's mottos. We strive together to create really cool and unique spaces that create great experiences for the people that are a part of those communities. And we're really excited to present that vision for 81 Black Rock Turnpike. I want to just talk about two more things. Number one, Emily, if you don't mind going to the next slide, is the importance about this site specific to this neighborhood. And then lastly, I'll quickly touch on the TOD study. It's our opinion that 81 Black Rock Turnpike, which, to familiarize everybody with where that is, it's right there, kind of a boot-shaped parcel, is, in our opinion, critically integral to connecting this cohesive new neighborhood in Fairfield. And it's obviously between the site that Accurate was talking about, the metro parking station, and where our friends at Invest Two have recently gotten approval for a great brewery at 111 Black Rock Turnpike. So it literally creates, it literally connects, you know, that neighborhood. The interesting thing also is there's this barbell effect created by our property and the Accurate proposal that I think is the anchor in which sustained critical mass will have, will be allowed to be here. In other words, that barbell is going to create that activation that we want in this neighborhood. And the sweetener on top of that is the illicit brewery site at 111 Black Rock Turnpike. That's going to augment this neighborhood. So we really viewed this entire process and the planning and design around our site, not only by itself, but holistically in the neighborhood, when we started the process. The last thing I would say about why we believe this site is so critically important to Fairfield is that despite 111 Black Rock Turnpike, the brewery, having the frontage on Black Rock Turnpike, it's really going to be 81, our site, that provides the architectural sort of articulation and prominence in this corner, the corner of Ash Creek and Black Rock Turnpike, that's going to be significant when you enter, you know, our town from Black Rock Turnpike. And Sealan will be able to show you some of those images. But I think that's important to note, too, that it's sort of an important hallmark of that corner, given the fact that the 111 building is set back a little bit. So we tried to bring our building articulations close and present them in a very nice, detailed way to achieve that goal, to activate that corner. Lastly, it's important to note, and I want to make sure everyone understands, that we spent a lot of time studying the TOD study. And we tried to pick out sort of the very high-level macro themes of that study, as well as the more detailed nuances, to guide our overall proposal. And I just want to touch on three of those before we get into any of the design details with Sealan. The first thing is that this site was obviously once an industrial building, as Commissioner Ford mentioned, and it's obviously been razed, and there's nothing there anymore, but it's a heavily contaminated site. And, you know, our proposal will be remediating and redeveloping, obviously, an underutilized site at a net fiscal positive impact to the town. The second thing I want to mention is, I would be remiss if I didn't mention this, but our friends, and I would call them partners, to our plan right at 111 Black Rock Turnpike and Post Road Residential, have been working for about six months together in the spirit of trying to figure out how the brewery and our site and the area and the neighborhood as a whole has a sum that's greater than the parts. And that's really kind of the theme that the principals at Invest Two, who own 111 Black Rock Turnpike, and us at Post Road, took from day one. We realize that we can create something really great if we work together. And Mike Shinella, you know, said it's okay to do this, we speak almost every day, and I just want to state for the record that he said that he's very supportive of our project and is looking forward to it. And lastly, because this was an important thing that the study mentioned, the Goody Clancy study mentioned, is that these proposals that come forward should have a very high-level quality of design, a quality of design that perhaps sets the bar high and sets a precedent for future development, that sets parameters for what good design is for our community, so that when future growth and development comes, there's a very good precedent set. And that's something that Post Road and Beinfield take very seriously. And hopefully, if you've had the ability to walk through our latest project that we finished together in Connecticut, which was in our hometown of Fairfield, at the Anchorage, you would appreciate that we do spend a lot of time thinking about that stuff. So, again, I appreciate you all for your time. Happy to answer questions after Sealan and Attorney Fallon finish up.
Thank you, John. Sealan?
I'll start with that first one, Emily. No, the one before that. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Sealan Pathan, I'm the principal at Beinfield Architecture. So I was going to go through the entire presentation, but I guess I needed to remind you of where we were, but it sounded like from previous comments in the last application that you know. So I'm going to limit my comments to items that support John's presentation that's coming after. Please stop me if you have any questions, but this is the same presentation and slides that you've seen before. So when we started to look at the site and think about the product and the project we wanted to develop, we first looked at the Goody Clancy study. There were specific goals there, urban planning goals, and those goals were reinforced by your staff when we spoke to them. In short, the TOD study seeks to create a sense of place in and around the train station. So we use that as a mission statement of sorts to create our own approach to this design. So first, we had four principal design goals. The first was to add activity and life along Ash Creek. And all of these should resonate with you if you've looked at that TOD study. The second was to create architecture at an urban living scale along Black Rock Turnpike, right here. And of particular importance to the study was this connection from Fairfield into Bridgeport. This corner defines that connection. The third was to create public space for public use and give people a reason to come to the site, this place, this area. And this barbell that Tom was speaking about is what we saw as an opportunity to do that. The reason for this portion is that it's the first thing you see as you drive into the parking lot in this area. So we tried to make it dramatic by creating a backdrop to a park that we're creating in this area, and we'll show you that. And the final was to create architecture that was engaging enough that it held a corner. Corner is the most important element in urban design, and also be the first thing that you see when you cross the bridge from Bridgeport into Fairfield. So, Emily, if you could go to the next one, please. So these are the hand renderings that describe, they're sketchy, but they have important information. So some of the elements I just discussed with you here are a park-like element that anchors this portion of the site, is Ash Creek, and yes, Black Rock Turnpike there. And this is the entrance to the, entrance to the parking lot of the train station. So you'll see that we created a park, a popular urban planning idea to create a backdrop to that park with a building that faces onto it. And we felt that this place could be closed down on a Saturday, for example. You could have food trucks come out here, you could program that with events. But truly a public space that people could migrate along the building from the train station. We have a connectivity path along this edge of the building into this area, and then across the road into established pathways that exist, exist in this protected area along the wall. So we think we can make this work, and we're using it to count to our bonus area. And John will explain that in more detail. Another important detail was, the TOD study seeks to create street edges and activate streets. We've got some easements that are running through this property, we're still trying to figure those out. I mean, there's a lot of these, Tom and John have figured most of them out, but not these that run across the front of this property. There's also a great change, a large great change from the street to this area here, about seven feet at least. So if you brought a building right up here, it wouldn't even be in line with the street at this point. So I think this was a good idea, and hopefully you agree. Instead of bringing the building to the street, we brought the potential experience to the building. So we helped, we figured we can control where people migrate across this site. So when they're walking down, instead of going all the way around, they cut across, straight across like this. In front of our building, public access across the face of our building, and in continued conversations with our neighbors, it'll lead into their site as well. This would be, and you'll see this in more detail on the plans, the detailed plans, but this is about 6,000 square foot of co-work space that we envisaged being open to the public. This is about 10,000 square foot of amenity space. We take particular pride with Post Road Residential in doing these spaces. We won awards and AI awards with them for these types of spaces. We can create a space here that will engage the street. And then the final element that those in section also is these townhouses that you remembered in the last presentation, right? These townhouse-like elements. They're accessed from the second floor, from a residential corridor, but they also have direct entry at the grade level. Does two things, it screens the parking behind, but it also creates a sense of place. When you're driving along Black Rock Turnpike, you can't develop this area. It's too narrow to develop into any meaningful building. This will be the face that you see. And the way we've currently designed it, the plan has progressed in our discussions with the neighbor, you'll see that. I think it's gotten better. It's like a boulevard of trees, with trees on both sides of this driveway, and stoops leading, and stoops leading up first floor units, or first floor entries into the second floor units. Next slide, please, Emily. So. My eyes are so bad, I have to look and see which one this is, I'm sorry. This is the, this is the townhouses. So this is the, this is the section that we're talking about that's meaningful, right? We've set the building back because you can't create the townhouse feel at five stories. Four stories, we're studying this a lot in our office, we've executed this in New Haven. Four stories works for a townhouse scale, and these are the entry stoops at the bottom, and this could be a boulevard of parking. You actually could reserve these parking spaces for these residents, park, take your groceries up, and go to your unit. Next slide, please. This is, this is the view to the amenity. This is the, this is a view, sorry, this is not the view to the amenity, this is a view to the courtyard. This is the public courtyard that we're speaking about. Again, building as a backdrop makes it dramatic. It's a roundabout of a road, but you can close that road down because we have two accesses into this property. So you can close that road down on a weekend. You could have food trucks, you could have events, you could program that. That's your public amenity. Next slide, please. So this is your Goody Clancy study, directly from, two pages from that study. And what it shows, besides the idea of organic growth, right? You can tell that there, they have a vision for how this area grows. But they take particular care in expressing how they want this corner to be treated. I'd like to point out that the cause of the property divisions, you can't do this, it's too wide. The project, the neighboring property, the property on the neighboring site is too narrow at this point. So we think our building needs to take that responsibility and serve to anchor that corner. So we've tried to do that. And the next slide, Emily. So this is what you'll see. When you're coming across, well, we'll advance this, obviously this is very early days, right? But when you come across from Bridgeport, across the bridge, we hope to create some engaging architecture. It's got three central ideas here. One is this townhouse approach here. Another is a floating box, a more modern approach to the architecture. And another building that anchors this side of the building that says, hey, I'm an entry, and also provides a backdrop to the park. Next slide, please. And this is just an image showing the park area and what this could really be. And again, these roads could be closed off. So at the moment, we're at 61 feet. I think we're allowed 60 feet. But I've got to qualify that by saying there's some significant grading that we have to deal with. And as we figure out the road, the road patterns in this area, our average grade might drop. So we are asking, I think, John, for the TOD regulations. Nothing more than that, just the suggested TOD regulations, I think I'd say five. We'll be well below it, but we'll be above what's currently allowed.
Can I ask you a quick question? This is, you're actually applying for change in our zoning regs, right?
Yes.
Are you discussing the concept review that we already went through like six months ago? Is this the same plan that we looked at already?
Yes, yes.
Or is this a different concept review?
No, this is the same.
You're showing this to illustrate how the zoning reg would work?
Correct, correct.
Could be helpful to me, because I don't remember what we talked about then, if you could sort of relate it to each.
I'm going to do, you mean each amendment?
Well, I mean, when you're talking about what we're looking at, how does that relate to the change you're proposing?
I'm, well, you can, I'll try to do.
Okay, thanks.
I'm going to do that.
I got confused, I thought we were doing another concept.
I'll try and do the stuff I remember, and then John maybe gets into the details, and I can come back.
I'll try to make a reg and see what, how it relates to what you're talking about.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
I'll speak directly to one of them right now.
No worries.
Which has got to do with space that you can count for non-residential use. And in this particular plan, we're saying, we want, we're going to count that ground floor amenity behind storefront, which is linked to the language in your TOD, as a non-residential use, and this is business co-work. And also, spaces that provide direct residential entry on the first floor that helps to add value for the design of the space and not counted, not counted to your overall building area. So those are two concepts that are right there.
Yeah, I'm going to go through, when Sealan's finished, point by point, each of the amendments, and explain how that relates to the feasibility of what we want to present.
And I'm almost done, so, I've got two more slides. I'll just read, if you can go back to the plan, the sketch plan, there's an important point there, please, that I want to tie into John's presentation. The plan, just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the color plan, hand-drawn color plan. And I apologize if I wasn't more clear. Yeah, thank you. So another important point tied back to the change in regulation is counting public spaces. So this public space, this public space that we've identified, and the links between public space, which is a pathway that, it's not showing entirely here, but links all the way back to a train station access. So those. So those will be counted towards a 20% required in this. So I think those are two, there's three big items I gave you, which is public space, areas that you count storefronts and so on, and height.
And I guess Sealan will be here too to answer any questions you have. So picking up on Commissioner Braun's points, let's go through this. I mean, obviously, our goal is to get your official blessing now by way of an approval of these text amendments, so we can go back and finalize and refine to the level of special permit and site plan presentation, our architectural and site plan, which would obviously be inclusive of all elements that you would expect as far as drainage and so on and so forth. But the proper way to do this, I think, is the way we're doing it, that you had the pre-app that allowed us some good feedback, which we've incorporated. Now we're here seeking the amendments that are necessary in order to facilitate this proposal, and if you approve the amendments, then we have to go through a special permit and site plan approval process with all the details, final renderings, et cetera, et cetera. So, let's talk about what's in front of you tonight. Section 13.14.2.
Can you put that up on, if you don't mind putting those up? The regulated, the proposed amendments, just so we can kind of go back and forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a good idea.
And this would relate to the entire, what?
TOD.
These are the amendments that we require in order to facilitate the development that we've shared with you in concept at the pre-app and again tonight.
And the area that it relates to, that it would govern is?
It would, well, they're amendments to the sections of your regulations.
I mean, this geographic area.
They were, well, that would, they are amendments to the transportation-oriented development park zoning regulations that are currently, so that they would implicate that.
Okay, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the section 13 is a subset of the Commerce Drive.
Correct.
Which is an overlay that allows the transit-oriented development park regulations to be enacted. The geography of that is a subset of the Commerce Drive area, and it's on, it's a commission to, as part of the application, this special permit, to determine whether the parcel should be classified as a transit-oriented development.
It's an overlay.
The difference is, I realize, because of the last pre-application we just heard, on the Metro centerpiece falls under section 21, which is a separate overlay entitled transportation commercial parks. So these regulations do not impact the geography of the previous pre-application.
Correct. And they really are not effective until the overlay has been approved, which would be part of our special permit application. But.
Does this apply to anyone that we approve as being a transit?
It doesn't apply to anything unless you.
A few miles away?
It doesn't apply to anything unless you approve it as a TO.
There are two such developments that are classified, one is trademarked, the other is.
Right. And we're gonna be seeking that classification, which would then allow us to develop in accordance with section 13.14. And these are the specific amendments of 13.14 that we need to make it work and to make it happen. Okay, so number one, and Emily's got those up there, thank you, Emily. Section 13.14.2. We seek to have co-working office space be explicitly made a permitted use in proximity to an employee's residence. That is a direct result of the impact of the pandemic, and as I referred to at the beginning, co-working space in proximity to residences is obviously in high demand in this time, in this marketplace. We want to provide that, we want to take advantage of that, and we want to address that market trend constructively. And by modernizing the definition of what is a permitted use in that context, I don't think we're asking for anything more than to take cognizance of how and where people, many people at least, desire to work at this point in time.
What do you see the difference between, why the addition? You have business and professional offices. Why did you need the co-working?
It's clarification. We don't want it to be left, well, does that fit in there? So we just thought, as long as we're coming here to you with these amendments, we'd make it explicit that co-working office space is a permitted use proximate to an employee's residence. I agree with you that as a lawyer, I could make, I think, a good argument that it could, the concept could fall under the current language, but we figured we were here, so we'd make it explicit.
But this also covers the first-floor commercial aspect of it.
Correct, which, and there's other aspects of the amendments that also will address that.
Thank you.
Section 13.14.4 basically deals with density and lot area in the TOD. So we're seeking a few changes here. Number one, we are requesting that the regulation be modified to allow a density of 75 bedrooms per acre rather than 50. This is in direct accordance with the TOD study recommendation. So we seek nothing more than what the TOD study recommends. And I think there's an interesting analysis in the TOD study as to why they recommended that. And basically, the reasoning is, and you've read the TOD study probably many times, it will lead to smaller units, fewer bedrooms, thereby meeting, more importantly, the demand of the marketplace and also providing, you know, a greater abundance of diversity of housing. At 50, the developer would be more apt to try to maximize, and you'd get a lot more larger units, three-bedroom units, and that's not our focus, both in terms of the market and what we think the town needs. So 50 to 75 bedrooms an acre directly, as recommended by the TOD study. Lot area. We seek in the amendment language, which you have in front of it, to include in lot area, areas that are covered by easements for vehicles and public utilities. This is extremely important in this area right here because of all the overlapping Tom alluded to and alluded to.
Like easements.
Yeah, I mean, come up, what I was going to just say is, in order to facilitate, you know, ownership cooperation and mutually convenient access, I think it's, this is an important amendment to have. Tom, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, so a little bit more detail about the easement caveat here. The history of this site, as many of you know, and the vestiges of the old ownership groups, means that there are a bunch of old easements all over these properties. And now that, for instance, 111 and 81 are owned by separate owners, and there is access needs and pedestrian circulation needs around both sites, we've come to agreements with our neighbors to create some pedestrian vehicular access easements so that customers from out, from the different sites can access each other's sites. So that's the context behind why in lot area, the concept of easement is included, because it's facilitating this sort of synergistic access between the sites that are next to each other and working together.
Are these existing easements or easements that you're creating?
Uh, there's both. There's both, yeah. There's a list of about 10 easements, and some are newly created to access this cooperation and pedestrian access.
If there's 10 that are existing, how many are, if there are 10 that are currently existing, how many did you?
So, not to get too into the weeds, but there were 10 that are, not in an ALTA survey, let's say, okay? That encumber at both sites. To make the goal of working together work, not to get into the weeds, but I guess we are, the owners are agreeing basically to erase old easements, create new easements, and these new easements facilitate those things we just talked about. So while there were old easements, some will remain, and then many new will come into effect to basically remove ones that aren't needed and to replicate the ones that the intent was for pedestrian access, but make them a little bit more clear.
I mean, the concept is pretty, I think this commission, both in the context of the TOD study, but also just in everything that you've approached over the years, development on Blackrock Turnpike and elsewhere, has always encouraged, you know, cooperation between adjacent property owners involving access and elimination of curb cuts and things of that nature. We're doing that here. You've already approved the brewery, and there's been, as Tom alluded to before, a great deal of cooperation between these two adjacent property owners.
I have one more thing I need to.
But a byproduct of that is, we do need some relief in terms of being able to not have those easements and that cooperative effort be held against us in the lot area calculation.
And that's fair, I just want, in a vacuum, because I haven't really thought.
Do we have easements to go? Oh, sorry.
Okay. In a vacuum, I just don't want the idea of, we are creating easements.
Right.
We are then now trying to.
Count.
Seek relief from because of our own actions.
I should have clarified, and maybe I should have brought an ALTA survey, but again.
We can do that at the special permit.
The two sites were once one site. When the brewery site sold Edward Rayner, the 81 site, they had to create easements off of Blackrock Turnpike so that Ted Rayner could access his site from what existed, the only street at that time, Ash Creek didn't exist. So there was an access easement that came off of Blackrock and then bifurcated the two sites, sort of parallel to Blackrock Turnpike. What I should have clarified, Commissioner Noonan, is that the new easements mimic the old easement areas and lines. They're just renamed and reclassified in a way, but it's over the same footprint of the old easements. So I should have, I should have mentioned.
No, that's fine, I guess I, more of a vacuum question than I asked Commissioner Braun.
Sort of a legal question. So right now, we don't necessarily include either, because the change is, lot area, for purposes of determining how many acres you can count, shall include street or highway comma, easements for vehicles or easements for above-ground public utilities. What of all those are not counted out? Is that all carved out now?
I believe the easements for vehicles and above-ground utilities.
I believe easements are carved out.
Not every kind of easement is carved out, right?
I think, I think, I think so.
Okay. I get it. Yes, it is. So, right now, the easements that are articulated here, the easements for street or highway for vehicles and above-ground utilities under the present regulations are excluded from lot area calculation. What they are looking to do for the purpose of this section only, not across the board throughout the entire regulation, but for the purpose of this section, allow those to contribute to the lot area calculation.
Correct. And I should have added one more point, and I apologize, and I don't mean to be tense, but the land in which these easements are on, that we're basically allowing access and flow between our sites to exist on, is on 81's legal land. It's on our land, and we're granting that land essentially to have mutually beneficial access rights for 111 for the brewery. So that's an important note, too, that all of these easements are actually on our land, which is another reason why the genesis of this is coming about.
Yeah, and it gets back to the concept of not to penalize a cooperative constructive effort between adjacent property owners to create common and mutually convenient access.
I understand the easements, yeah, but the highway and the street concerns it a little bit, so what highway or street would be included then, potentially?
No highway, no highway easements. I think the comment was, that's just cleaning up what's currently included.
It says street or highway comma. I mean, street or highway would be included at first? I don't know.
Well, we don't, we're trying to, we were dealing with the language that excludes all of that from a lot area now.
That's in another section that I don't see, so.
Yeah, our only, our only interest is in the.
It's just mimicking, I'm sorry, John.
Go ahead.
Mimics the language in our current lot area and shape definition that is excluded.
Elsewhere in a way.
Correct.
But street or highway, you're not saying a street or highway that's not in your?
No.
Oh, that's, you're not, you're talking about street or highway easements, not street or highway.
Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you.
Maybe the comma shouldn't be there. Okay, thanks.
Correct.
Okay.
Also, in the same section, 13.14.4, with regard to the 20% non-residential requirement, and we'll talk about that, we're eliminating from total floor area, common areas, you can see the language up there, amenity areas, mechanical areas, ground floor residential access and circulation areas, lobbies and elevators. This was a direct, and was referenced and acknowledged as appropriate in the TOD study. So again, this amendment, although quite technical, is something that was discussed in the TOD study and was acknowledged as appropriate in the context of the TOD. Number four, and this is a little complicated, but non-residential uses under the amendment that we seek to make can include open space, and this gets to the point that Sealan was making, can include open space, connectivity to open space, and pedestrian easements, provided access to commercial uses and those providing access to commercial uses and leasing offices. This amendment only applies to properties not located in the, quote, retail priority edge, which is defined in terms of the study. These challenged areas, there are areas here which, as are discussed in the TOD, are challenged that they really can still be utilized to provide non-residential uses to achieve the goals of providing open space areas and connectivity to open space areas and pedestrian easements of that type. So we're asking that those non-residential uses can be included in that calculation.
And the retail priority edge is Blackrock Turnpike. The fact, and what we're saying is, we don't have slantage.
Correct.
On Blackrock Turnpike, which is really.
Commissioner Braun.
And I understand you have a unique situation here, which I appreciate from last time, the concept review. You don't have the ability to do retail.
Right.
Collaborating with other people during.
Right. But we want to do something that's meaningful to, to the goal of the TOD by way of facilitating additional open space opportunities, pedestrian easement areas and stuff, and we're doing that, as Sealan pointed out. But in doing that, we want to be able to get credit, if you will, that those could be included, those areas could be included as non-residential uses.
So could that then harm our ability to require 20% commercial, which is really what we want and need, like everywhere in, you know, under this reg? How do, is this overly broad? Could this be refined or fine-tuned so that everybody doesn't just say, well, I'm just gonna have some public sidewalk or whatever?
Well, again, you have to remember, under the amendment, I understand your concern, but I think we've addressed that, because under the amendment, this inclusion as a non-residential use area would only apply to not, to those portions of the property or to those properties not located in what they define as the retail priority edge. So it would only apply in those areas, like you said at the beginning, where you really are challenged to create any meaningful retail because of, you know, the location of the property.
I wonder, would it be too verbose if we added that definition in here? For, I don't know how long it is in the TOD. It's just, I don't know what it says in the TOD study from 2019.
Yeah, to be very candid, as long as we get the benefit of the.
I don't know what that means.
As long as we get the benefit of the inclusion, in our case, of these open space and easement areas that are located elsewhere than in the retail priority edge, we'd be satisfied. But I think it is a reasonable request because we understand, and we are not seeking to change the 80/20 reference, but these spaces, as Sealan was pointing out, these common areas, these open space areas where we could have food truck festivals and things of these natures, that is consistent with an attempt to create non-residential amenities in a mixed-use community like this.
Not to butt in again, but in answer to your question, I don't think the plan has a specific definition. It's more of a visual reference. There's a map within the TOD plan that highlights, that identifies where it's important to have retail priority edges, where we want that ground floor commercial space, and others that our consultant team, and I think this team recognizes that it's gonna be hard to achieve. Some have more locational advantages than others in terms of facilitating that, and so it's identified visually on a map. It's not language. It's called out in that plan by map.
So my concern with having a vague definition is, once we grant some other development night areas to scatter.
Well, as we're agreeing to what we've identified in that plan, so I think it ties back to the actual map, and perhaps when we. back to the actual map, and perhaps when we, when we discuss this, we can provide that mapping for you so you can see it.
So we would have the discretion at the time some other person applies and we grant them status at TOD, we would have the discretion to say, well, we don't think you fit into this definition, so you need to have the 20%.
Well, it's on the map. In other words, if, as Jim pointed out, this retail priority edge is absolutely defined. It's on a map. So that if the property in question or the portion of the property in question.
So it's sort of the digital geography.
Like a zoning, like a zoning.
Yeah, yeah. So if it shows that the property is in the retail priority edge or that portion, then this would not apply.
What defines that?
Like a zoning map.
Yeah, the map is very explicit.
Like zone A, zone B, that kind of.
I know that.
Okay. Commissioner Brayman.
Well, Attorney Fong, would you have any objection to pasting the map into the reg graphically so that the reader wouldn't have to go to a separate document?
No, as shown below, something like that. Exactly, that's a good idea, yes.
It'd be all digital now.
Commissioner Harrison, did you have a question?
Was there another question?
Did you have a question, Commissioner Harrison?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Good to see you, though.
Okay, yeah, you too. Okay.
Any other?
I'm, I'm, I'm not going anywhere, but I'll just keep moving. 13.14.7, again, as recommended by the TOD study, we are recommending that the regulation pertaining to below-market rental units be increased from 10% to 12%. We are cognizant of the conversation that occurred a moment ago in the pre-app. We're also cognizant of that the entire town, understandably and properly and with a great deal of a good track record, is very committed to, as a priority, below-rate market unit availability in our town. We considered that very carefully. Obviously, we had the TOD study, but the TOD study obviously was done in 2019 and we wanted to make sure that we were being careful and forthright in our analysis. What I can tell you, and Mr. Montelli could elaborate, is we carefully crunched the numbers here, and because of the fairly extraordinary cost associated with remediation of this site, there's just no envelope for us on this piece of property to push beyond the 12%. You'll recall that before Post Road Properties came to see you, probably a year or two before that, I did another pre-app on this same piece of property involving Continental Property, a very well-regarded developer. And much to my regret, but I understand it, they walked away from the project. They walked away from the property once they quantified the cost of remediation. So now we have a local developer and we've looked carefully at this, and if we could do more than 12%, we'd do it because we know you'd like to see it and we're committed to it as well. But we just don't have that facility on this piece of property. And that's as honest and candid as we can be with you.
Because what's the difference in 3% then? How many units?
Well, I'll let Mr. Montelli, the number cruncher, but when you start looking at the numbers, they add up.
Probably close to 10 units.
How many, how many units total?
240 right now.
240, so 3% would be, okay.
So, yeah. I was going to give a very candid and honest answer, an unambiguous, sort of unequivocal answer. John did that. There were two concerns, market feasibility, and just to touch on that very quickly, not to be dense again, but from the time we put this site under contract, and John referenced the last developer who did this, the time that we put this site under contract to now, as we all know, interest rates have actually doubled from the time I put this under contract to now. That absolutely crushes real estate values. Crushes real estate values because the way real estate is valued is you discount future cash flows, discount them by an interest rate, and when that interest rate goes up, those present values of those cash flows go way down. So real estate right now is in a really tough spot. And this project right now is sort of on the edge of feasibility just because of current financial conditions and capital markets. That's just blatant honesty. The second part I was going to talk about that John eloquently mentioned was the remediation cost. This has maybe a $4 million remediation cost, just on top of the hard cost to build the building. So John's summary was accurate.
Commissioner Levy. Have you ever crunched the number as to the present value of the cost for having a single affordable unit, either 60 or 80%? And of course, the variables would be the rentals, the interest rates, but I mean, over 40 years, what does it cost you for each affordable unit?
Well, the analysis we've ran was at 80% AMI. So no, I have not run it at 60 on a single unit basis.
I couldn't hear that. What was that?
The proposal right now and what we've modeled financially is at the 80% AMI level. And Commissioner Levi asked if we had crunched the numbers at lower levels of area median income, like 50, 60, and I answered that we haven't, we haven't looked at that. I would respond in full honesty and full transparency that if the same percent was required at any of those levels, we wouldn't be here today. It just, the numbers wouldn't work.
And have you put a number on what it costs you for an 80% unit?
Over 40.
Present value of the cost over 40 years.
No, no, but there's a typical standard out there that in other communities, and it's pretty widely known, that, you know, if you look at a buyout percentage that are a buyout figure for affordable unit numbers, I haven't verified this analysis, but there's a standard out there about like $50,000 per unit to buy out units, say if you're buying out from 10% to 5%. But the reason why affordable units and the deed restriction on them impacts that future cash flow is that, again, if you're valuing those future cash flows and discounting them to the present, this is just the numbers of it. Market rate units, maybe, you trend annually when each lease turns over, let's say at the inflation rate, whatever that is at the time. Let's just say 3% on average. However, as you know, with the affordables, they're fixed to a certain extent. So that's why over the long term, over a 40-year period of time, the economic effects, the cash flow difference is so significant because you lose the ability to trend rents to mark them to market, if you will, on inflation. I didn't mean to be like flippant in the answer, but.
No, no. Section 13.14.9 basically is just an adaption of the recommendation of the TOD study, which is to limit the height of buildings to five feet and, five stories and 70 feet. Another important, and again, very much addressed in the TOD study, portion of this amendment is a minimum flight, a minimum height on ground floor areas facing the street at 15 feet. There's a large discussion in the TOD of why that's desirable. So again, 13.14.9, the proposed amendment, is strictly in accordance with the TOD study, limiting height to five stories and 70 feet, and then establishing that there is a minimum height of ground floor story areas that are facing a street of 15 feet to create the kind of amenity space that I think they were envisioning. Section 13.14.10 permits measurement of the setback requirements from the edge of the public open space or existing easements. That's really important here and to us because it's really essential due to the realities of properties located in this area and in the potential TOD overlay, most of which are burdened by historic utility or access or other easements. And so we're just looking for relief from that reality, to be honest with you, and being able to measure the mandated setbacks that are currently in the regulation in those cases where it's warranted from those areas that, you know, as I said a minute ago, are bordered by public open space, existing easements, things of that nature. We're not looking to change the setback number. I think it's 15 feet, if I'm not mistaken. I can't read that, but.
Maximum 18.
Maximum 18. Is there a minimum? 15, 12?
10.
10, yeah. Okay, so that's, that's, that's what that particular amendment is all about. Then the other two are very straightforward. They're both new sections. Section 13.14.14 is a landscaping section that's directly taken from the TOD study. We embrace it. And similarly, section 13.14.15, brand new, is bicycle spaces as specifically recommended by the TOD study. We think that's an important amenity, and I know the commission in other contexts has been very committed to that in the past. So those are all of the elements of the amendments. And as I said at the beginning, by and large, they are adaptive of the specific TOD recommendations. There are some, as we've discussed tonight, that quite honestly do relate to dealing with the unique aspects of our site and ensuring that we can render this project to be feasible. But at the end of the day, even those technical ones, I think, and we hope you'll agree, are consistent with the purpose of the overlay zone as adopted and also consistent with the goals of the TOD study because they all help us develop this very vibrant mixed-use community, you know, whereas to adopt the language I love from the study, people can live, work, and eat and play. I think it's.
Learn.
Okay. And that's, so that's what we're trying to do here, and we're very excited, if you see fit, to approve these amendments, to roll up our sleeves and to come up with a comprehensive special permit and site plan application and adoption of the TOD overlay, which will allow us to make this a reality. Yeah, and we thank you for your time. Yes.
Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all this. Got a question. Just on the co-working phase, that's 6,000 square feet, right?
Mm-hmm. I think it's.
As I was, yes.
Yes.
It's pretty big. I don't know what the demand is for that market anymore. I mean, I work on my house a lot.
Yeah, so one thing that's really interesting about co-working.
I just had a question for that.
Please, yeah.
That just leads into my question, though. Is there any flexibility to create another unit or two that's affordable? That seems quite, I'm just wondering if you could trade something here because we do need the affordability. And I'm hearing that you can't go beyond the 12%, is that right? Just based on the land and the needs.
The cost associated.
Of course, obviously, the cost.
Right, with development.
Right, so.
I think that was.
Was that considered, I guess?
Something that they touched on.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I'm John McFadden, one of the partners in Post Road, and I live in Fairfield as well. What are the elements?
A little closer to the mic.
What are the elements the previous applicant discussed was the 80-20, you know, commercial residential threshold? If we're going to go below the 20% and use that towards affordability, that's just kind of an analysis we would look at. But right now, we're holding at 80-20, which is, you know, the kind of goal of the TOD study. That was something they mentioned. I thought that was a good point to bring up.
Okay, thank you.
And just to answer your question about.
Yeah.
Co-work feasibility, 6,000 feet is sufficient, but it's not massive. One thing that we've learned in our building, our buildings together that we've designed and built and owned is that a lot of our customers, like 30% of them, work from home. You know, there's a proliferation, obviously, of entrepreneurs, independent consultants. So we design our amenity spaces as well to facilitate that. The co-work space that we're going to dedicate in this building is dedicated co-work space for the entire community, but by no means is, we feel like it's too large of a space.
And when you say community, do you mean anyone from Fairfield could go in there or break the law?
Absolutely, yeah. Open to the public.
Well, that's, it's not leased out then? It's open to the public?
Well, it would be, it would be available to the public.
Leased out, though.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Memberships.
Yeah, I mean, was it regal office space?
Amber or something.
Regis, is that what it is?
Yeah, Regis.
Remote, what is it, remote office space by, by, well, at least to get a, to get almost a mailing address.
Yeah, right. A printer, if you don't have a printer at home, right?
Yeah.
It's a license, not a lease.
I may be heading there as a, you know, co-worker.
It's probably still leased, I don't know. Commissioner Francis.
I wonder if you need to go quite, request quite 70 feet for five stories. Couldn't you do four 10s and a 15?
Well, as Seelin indicated, we're probably not going to be at 70 feet. We.
Absolutely.
We just mirrored the TOD study there. So I think the five stories is, is something we'd like to maintain.
Yes, the five stories.
Five stories is important. We won't be at 70 feet, so that's, you know, but we just figured if that's what the TOD study recommended, we thought that would be a good thing to suggest as an amendment.
I think the short answer is, once we finish our average grade calculations and the complicated grading I was describing, we can establish it will definitely be below 70 feet.
But we'll let you.
Give you a real number if you want.
Yeah, you'll know as part of the special permit presentation what the actual height as defined by your regulations is, and then you can make a determination.
But correct, we don't need all of it.
Yeah, what is it? It's currently only at 60, right?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
I see Mr. Wenton nodding, but. Commissioner Brayman.
Where we could get an idea of the actual anticipated height, you know, before we have to make a decision on amending the reg?
Well, definitely under 70, right? It's definitely under 70. Do we still show you exhibits of those?
Sure.
So if we go to the section, the side section, the reason I'm hedging on the height is because there's a drop-off as you come onto Ash Creek. It's the autocad section right at the bottom. You have to go all the way down. Just keep going after the plans. Yep, just keep going. After those plans, you'll see it. Got it? Yep, right there. Yep. So you have a chance, can you zoom in on that?
Um, here's the show.
Okay, bottom right. So you see, as Commissioner was suggesting, five stories are easy from the parking lot side, 11.6, 11, 11, 11, 12, right? So that's well under 70. But because we have a grade change as we're trying to make our way down to Ash Creek, the amenity gets much higher, but still, that's still 60, by our calculation, around what, 61 feet from average grade there? But we haven't, we haven't done the average grade yet. From average grade, though, 61.
Are we comfortable, Seelin, that, just so, to answer the Commissioner's question, that you could feel confident that based upon the definition of height, we wouldn't exceed 65 feet?
Can you add those for me, brother? Can you add those? Can you add those now? So yes, I think 65. We'll confirm that before we say.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
I wanted to give Commissioner Brayman an answer.
No, no, thank you. And yeah, I mean, I imagine even a quick supplement email is fine.
Well, I can let, I can let, if we close the hearing tonight, I can let Mr. Went know.
Yeah, I think that's, that's.
He can share that information.
I think that's appropriate. Any other member of the commission have questions? Anything further?
No, we're excited about this and we're anxious to bring the full package to you for your consideration, and we hope you'll find these amendments to be appropriate, especially since so much of it is taken right out of the TOD study, which I still think has very, very much validity. I know time passes, but I think it's still a very good study for development of this area and was worth doing and a good footprint and blueprint to move on. So, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Barnhart and anybody joining us remotely, that ends the initial presentation on the applicant. I see one extra person, at least in person, for public comments, so, no? Oh, I assumed, I assumed wrongly. So not seeing anybody.
Glad to have you with us regardless.
Yeah. So I don't see any. Um, so I don't see anybody else in person, so I'll reach out to people joining us online to see if anybody wishes, any member of the public wishes to speak on this application. If you are calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself. Is there anybody, Ms. Aragon? Aside from Commissioner Francis? Okay.
Chairman, just before you close, I'm-
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a sec, yeah.
What is it? Sixty-five feet does work, so I don't have to do any further calculating.
Thank you.
To give Commissioner Brayman answer to his question there.
Any member of the public wish to be heard on this? Again, please press star six to unmute yourself if you're joining us by phone. Hearing nobody joining us remotely, seeing nobody in person, I will close public comments, and-
Thank you very much.
Nothing further, nothing further. I'll close the hearing, close the hearing on this application, it being the last application, close the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So how are they doing?
Okay.
Okay, we'll come to you later.